I call the city council meeting to order. It's Monday, May 5th, 2014, 7:00 PM. Please join me in the hudge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, for God our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to introduce my fellow council members, Mark Vanderlinde, Arlene Donahue, Bob Christians, and I'd like to introduce our staff, starting with Mike Funk, City Administrator, Ron Beatty, our City Attorney, Brian Grimm, our Finance Director, Mike Barone, Assistant City Administrator, Paul Falls, Chief of -- Director of Public Safety, and David Abel, Director of Community Development. And then joining us this evening is Paul Hornby from WSB, who will be taking over our engineering, day-to-day type items. Mark Erickson will be working on our projects. So now we need to talk about approval of the agenda, and I have quite a few changes. The regular meeting minutes aren't available, so I think we should move that to the next meeting. I'll go through all the changes and then we can talk about it. Public Works Union contract, we should move out of the consent agenda since we just received it, so we can put that under business. Can we put that under J? And then under H, under Business Items, to adopt the summary and title for publication for Orchard Cove Ordinance 418, or Number I, the feasibility study for Hoffman, for the Hoffman property, for their water, stormwater management project. And then J would be the discussion of the Public Works Union contract. Do anyone else have any changes?
No.
Take a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now it's time for persons to be heard. We have quite a few people, so I am going to ask you to keep it pithy, and we do have a three-minute limit. If this is regarding the water treatment, I am going to allow questions after Bolton and Mink has done their presentation. And so, start with Dave Cole.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. First, I want to thank you for keeping your campaign promises that you would allow persons to be heard at this time, and also your promise to lift the time limit. I also want to thank you for listening to the people at the last meeting two weeks ago and restoring our school officer position. I don't think we should have had to petition you so strongly, but I appreciate that you relented in your opposition. Lastly, I spoke two weeks ago and I was interrupted three times by council members, and I would ask to be allowed to finish what I have to say. Also, if you have comments about what I say, I do expect additional time to respond to those comments as well. Mr. Vanderlinde, in the Laker newspaper on April 11th, you were quoted as saying that recent requests from residents for public information were offensive to you. Mr. Christians, you were quoted as saying that these requests by residents for public information constituted harassment of you. Those are your words. At the last meeting, and by the way, that's the Laker article, April 11th, which I have for you if you'd like a copy. At the last meeting, I was interrupted, I was trying to explain and make a point about this. This is a page from Mrs. Hunt and Mrs. Donahue's campaign website, on which they posted employee names and wages of all city employees by name. Your campaign supporters made a request for this public information, in order to get that information. But your campaign didn't have enough respect or class to redact the names of the employees. I think the point you were trying to make was an observation about what public employees are paid. I don't understand why you had to include their names, but let me give you an example. There's a young police officer named here with his wage. This was posted somewhere, and I'll get to that, in his neighborhood. Well, let me get to that part first. So you posted the names. Apparently, that wasn't enough for your campaign manager, Tom Notch, who ran paper copies of this, what I consider a slap at staff, and stuck them in a gas station. A big pile of paper copies of this in a gas station. Was that offensive? Was that harassment? Now picture a young cop on this list, that gas station's in his neighborhood. He's out on the street trying to do his job, doing enforcement. That does entail making people unhappy sometimes, unfortunately. And he goes into the gas station for a cup of coffee, and there's somebody he just cited recently, reading his personal information. Is that offensive? Is that harassment? The difference here is, this was harassment directed at employees, and the rules about harassing employees are different than your petty political squabbles. And this was conducted by your campaign supporter with your complicity on your website. And by the way, all four of you are listed as supporters on that website. If requesting public information is harassment, surely your actions in this example constitute much worse. Also, at the last meeting, I read to you an obnoxious and offensive email, sent to all city staff and all of you were copied, by one of your very vocal supporters, Jerry Wigan. This is public information because it was sent to city staff. I read it two weeks ago, and I asked you if you would publicly rebuke this, or create some distance, disassociate yourselves from this person, but you declined, so I'm going to read another one. Now, that one was a few years old, this one is just two months ago. In this email from two months ago, Mr. Wigan sent this email, and it is public because two of you are included in this. And it references a conversation you were planning to have about city business the following Saturday morning at Scotty B's. And according to the email, in addition to those two of you, Mr. Christians was going to join this conversation by telephone from Las Vegas, and that's all listed out here. The subject is "Excitement: WSB Day Is Less Than 12 Hours Away." And by the way, for the people in the audience, this is a reference to the city engineer, who was by now fully under attack by your campaign supporters. And it states here, in this email, that the city engineer is going to quote "pee his pants" when he addresses the city council. It makes an even more obscene accusation against the city administrator. I question why this was going to be discussed on Saturday morning at Scotty B's, with not only a quorum of this council, but with Mr. Tom Notch and Mr. Jerry Wigan. But worst of all, this email referenced Mayor Cheryl Fisher. And this is a little graphic, so I'd like to apologize to anyone who's offended by this, but I'm just going to read it. This is quoted from the email. "Immediately following the pledge, we will convene at the hill behind Scotty's parking lot, so that Tom Donahue can demonstrate to Cheryl how water really does run downhill. Knowing that she will be overcome, I have ordered a paramedic to be there, to rush her to urgent care. I'm sure this will be more than she can handle. Be there to witness all the excitement." Now, in case I need to spell this out, this is a reference to Mrs. Donahue's husband dragging the mayor outside and urinating on her. Yes, vile, disgusting. Mrs. Hunt, you received this email. So did Mrs. Donahue. And interestingly enough, also included in the email was someone whose name we keep seeing with this pattern of harassment, like the one I gave before, Tom Notch, another Minatrista resident. The members of this council who received this gave no rebuttal, no public condemnation, and just two weeks ago, Mr. Wigan, who sent this vile crap, was standing right where I am now, explaining how the water project was being shepherded to Bolton and Mink and Wigan Water. Your association with this person is disgraceful. Mrs. Hunt, after Mayor Fisher resigned, you told the Star Tribune that there was no hostility toward her from this council. More recently, you told the Laker that the accusations of wrongdoing by this council were quote "mostly baseless." The harassment of city staff is not baseless. The hostile work environment is not baseless. Your collusion with Mr. Notch and Mr. Wigan is not baseless. The violation of open meeting law is not baseless. The council quorum at Scotty B's on Saturday morning and the sharing of employee data is not baseless. It is based on public information. I have this public information because of a request with which Mr. Christians considers harassment. Counsel, your world is upside down. Mrs. Hunt, I also have copies of email where you state that you want to quote "strangle staff members," and you call them quote "idiots." And yet another, you say you plan on quote "wringing their neck." Mrs. Hunt, I also recall the conversation you and I had four years ago, where you said that quote "the people who negotiated the police contract with St. Bonnie should be Now, I work for a city. Thank God, it's a functional city. If I made statements like these, I would be barred from making personnel decisions, because it would expose my city and its residents to huge liability. I would not only be fired, or in the case of elected officials, perhaps removed from office at the next election, I would be barred from making personnel decisions, because it would expose my city and its residents to huge liability. I would be making my city an open target for lawsuits for hostile work environment and wrongful termination. This council has created a hostile work environment. Now, under that backdrop, you kept the city administrator locked in a closed session until 12:30 midnight during the last meeting two weeks ago. And who was waiting in the lobby? Tom Notch, the very person who you've been complicit with in creating this environment. You may find this entertaining, or maybe you're finding some measure of vengeance for the construction of a police building, or maybe you're just doing the bidding of your very vocal supporters. But in the process, you are exposing us, the people in this room, to lawsuits, liability, loss of service, and possibly the loss of the city's insurance. Lastly, and then I'll finish. After years of complicity with Mr. Notch and Mr. Wigan, and even after your refusal to condemn Mr. Wigan's obnoxious statement just two weeks ago, when I asked you to do so, please do not follow my words tonight with some lame, much-too-late condemnation or apology. Just do the right thing, stop abusing city staff, and don't fire anyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Anderson.
Hi, Tracy Anderson, 9200 County Route 26. Wow, I'm even more mad. I'm here today after witnessing a Minatrista citizen being unjustly put in public forum at the last city council meeting on April 21st by the mayor and this council. While in attendance on another matter, there was a draft of an official resolution made by Mayor Hunt, which included accusations against a man by the name of Steve Gale, who I learned was a Minatrista community service officer and now retired.
You are mistaken. It was a hiring practice. There was nothing regarding Steve Gale. It was a hiring practice.
I will get to that point. Thank you for interrupting me. After hearing the Assistant City Administrator give simple clarification on actual facts regarding this matter, I became outraged at the mayor and this council for the lack of effort in finding these facts, and the ease of publicly putting this man's service into question, not to mention the money that would have been spent by the Minatrista taxpayers unnecessarily on a state audit. It seems one man from Minatrista wrote an email that was submitted last meeting to you, Mayor Ann Hunt. It was from a Mr. Schmuck. It's asked you to include on your official state audit, which includes other city issues, an investigation into Mr. Gale and what he called lucrative retirement benefit packages and lifetime pensions and associated healthcare coverage for Mr. Gale and his family. Mr. Schmuck continued to call into question the integrity of the hiring practices of Mr. Gale regarding the personal relationship he claimed existed between Mr. Gale and then Police Chief David Cole. This official resolution was drawn up and put in the agenda by Mayor Hunt and adopted by the full council, and was publicly addressed in that last meeting. The resolution stated this, that citizens of Minatrista have brought to the attention of the city council that improper and questionable hiring practices have been done by the city. This is a direct statement on record by the acting mayor and council that Mr. Gale was hired due to improper and questionable practices, not alleged or suspected, but that have been done. Mayor, it seems to me you never looked into any of these allegations before drafting. There was one email that you based your resolution on. In the last meeting, the Assistant City Administrator went piece by piece describing Mr. Schmuck's accusations and the terms of Mr. Gale's employment, the retirement package, and his retirement. He debunked all of it. The entire email was false. Please don't interrupt. The Assistant City Administrator was quite clear that nothing is being paid by the city of Minatrista to Mr. Gale, nor will it be in the future. Let me say, I do not even know Mr. Gale. However, I sympathized with him because of the hostility in this community and in this chamber. When I saw what was happening here by elected council, I became outraged. I took time to investigate the matter myself, and I'm here to put on record what was done to a now private citizen of this community, and the costs that were almost put on taxpayers due to the inadequate inquiries by you. With the cut-and-dry information that was explained that night, it would seem to me that there was more than enough information right down the hall and at your fingertips. Yet, this Assistant City Administrator made comment, he was never asked about the matter. If you had simply inquired into this issue, a citizen's character would have never been put into question in public form at all. But that wasn't done. Instead, Mayor Hunt, you and all the council members set Mr. Gale up publicly to appear that there was evidence that he received something he shouldn't have, and quote "questionable hiring practices" have been done by the city pertaining to his employment. This was not just a mistake, but malicious, from a lack of concern for the citizen and done with incredibly false and easily corrected information. As I stated, I did not know Mr. Gale, but after the meeting, I called him up. He would be here tonight, but he's out of town, and out of respect, I asked him if he minded that I step up here and talk on his behalf, so that this doesn't happen to anyone else. In talking to him, he stated that he was deeply hurt by the public forum in which his service and dedication to the city had been brought into question. He thought he had done a good thing and was giving back, and that was important as a member of this community. The Assistant City Administrator never went into detail about the actual accusations in the mayor's resolution regarding the quote "only on the packages." So the questionable hiring practices that have been done by the city, I assume this pertained to Mr. Schmuck's reference, that Mr. Gale's wife and then Police Chief David Cole had a personal connection because they supposedly attended school together in Duluth. Facts are, Mr. Gale's wife moved from Duluth to California at the age of 10. David Cole never went to school in Duluth. Another hugely false and easily found fact that was corrected with a simple phone call. All of the above information is simple to obtain and resulting in no cost to taxpayers and no need for a bill from the state auditor to investigate this. When I listened to the facts versus the opinions brought forth by one citizen, it was maddening, and I hope caused humiliation at the lack of the preparation in regard for this man's personal life. I also brings to mind the cost of such an audit to taxpayers that could not be expected to be met with public favor due to the council's lack of effort to find these facts. Not one citizen in this community deserves this to happen to them without even a phone call or a simple walk down the hall to a member of the Minatrista staff to investigate such accusations. You are seated as elected officials. You have responsibilities, and there are legal ramifications for your actions or the lack thereof. Causing a lawsuit against this city for defamation or lack of fact will not be tolerated by the people who will ultimately pay this bill. You are expected to find the facts before acting publicly. Your names are officially tied, not the people who ask you to act on their behalf or with their opinions, not when they present you stacks upon stacks of facts according to them. Make sure the truth matches these facts, or you will be held culpable by the citizens of this city. Vendettas are not to be settled here. Ms. Hunt, you didn't even realize that there would be a cost billed to the taxpayers when you called for your audit. I assumed, and you assumed, it was free. I would consider who provided you this information and never trust them again, without checking with staff first, as we, the taxpayers, are providing them to do that for you. Are any of you prepared to take the fall for misleading information given to you by citizens? Because I'm prepared to hold you accountable for it. Mr. Gale proudly served his city for all the right reasons. He stepped up and wanted to be a productive person in retirement. How do you expect anyone to want to work or serve this city with this lack of concern and possibility of public humiliation and question of character? Due to this lack of communication with your staff at CM City, employees are not valued by this council on even a simple matter such as this. I feel for them and the environment that's being created by this council. I have lived in this area for over 40 years. There are good people here. We may not all agree with each other, but we are free to have a difference of opinion. To gain employment, to run for office, or retire without being put out publicly, anonymously, or called into public forum in these chambers, to question without the efforts of asking a few questions. I believe Mr. Gale should receive an official apology by the mayor and council for their behavior in this matter. I also feel that the Minatrista city staff should be the ones handling the writing of these resolutions, as I believe it was not drawn up by them, and be your source of information on policy and procedure. After all, we, the taxpayers, are the ones who are providing them for you. Thank you.
Todd Barkus.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council Members. My name is Todd Barkus. I live at 4570 Morganser Drive. I have been a resident of Minatrista for 27 years. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. The reason I am speaking to you is because I'm concerned about the wasting of city money when you spend time checking on matters that city staff could easily answer for you. My first case being the state auditor investigation. This investigation was going to look into some supposed vendor price gouging that our city is experiencing, and a supposed huge benefit for one of our employees. Instead of simply asking the city's finance director, Mr. Grimm, about this information, you, Mayor Hunt, talked to a reporter. And when you do finally talk to Mr. Grimm, you find out that the state is not just sitting around waiting to do things for free for the city, so you table the whole idea. To me, it was just a weak attempt to create a smokescreen to divert attention from another misstep of the council, namely the water treatment and Bolton and Mink. Why is it that our staff needs to spend so much time trying to hunt down city communications you have made? Why does it seem to be beyond your grasp that your communication about city projects needs to be done in an open manner, and the communication needs to be retained versus deleted at the end of the week? I know you were told you had to keep them. I do think it is a good step to purchase city phones, and Councilman Vanderlinde, I do appreciate your concern for the taxpayers needing to spend the money. I just wish the council was as concerned about being open and following the law. On the topic of the water treatment plant, it starts to look to me like it's just another waste of city money to ignore the recommendations of staff. First, you agreed with the staff, and then you reversed yourself. You reversed yourself because you, Mayor Hunt, individually took it upon yourself to obligate the city to a charge to have another company tell you exactly what you wanted to hear. And why, when there's been talk about how the city is using so much water that we're not being sustainable, do you really want to put in a system that consumes more water by the way it's designed? Water that just gets flushed down the drain? I'm not even arguing about the technology. I really have a concern that you did not follow the correct procedures to investigate what you wanted to do. Your lack of willingness to work with city staff and these other actions do not seem to be in the best interest of the city taxpayers. In conclusion, I think we have some of the best staff in the state. I think you should figure out a way to compensate our city clerk for all the work she is doing that the law requires her to do. I think you should start listening to the advice of our city staff. City staff are the professionals in their area. They know the rules and procedures required, which is more than I can say for the council. And I think they, the staff, have the best interests of the city in mind, which, again, I'm not so certain about the council. Thank you.
Loretta Magnusson? Is she here?
I'm here.
Want to step to the podium?
I have something to say, other than I wish you guys would do a better job.
Okay, let's see. Andrea Felmudi, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Council Members, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am a 29-year resident of Minatrista. I live at 1260 Morningview Drive, and I have been drinking the city's water for 29 years. I have worked in the safety and environmental field for over 30 years. I'm here tonight because I have serious concerns about the RO treatment option that the city is considering. Before I start, though, I would like to ask the city council if any of you folks are on city water. No. How many people in the audience are on city water, I'm curious? Not many. Boy, we got to wake up this community. Well, I have three major concerns. First of all, since you folks aren't on city water, you're obviously not going to be affected by the significant increase in city water rates that the 11,000 households and 1,100 households in Minatrista are going to have to bear the burden of this expensive system. So that does not make sense and is certainly not fair. I have three major concerns with this project. My first concern has to do with the quality of the drinking water. Other than iron and manganese, and I can attest to the iron problems because I've had orange spots on my clothes for years. These things, however, are not a health problem, they're an aesthetic problem, and so I would like to hear from you what you think the health problems are with our current drinking water supply. What is the health hazard?
We're not here. You can --
Well, I'd like to know.
We're having a complete overview of the water treatment, and by the way, the water users are the ones who are putting in input for which system is selected.
Okay, well.
Yes, we know that our water meets all Department of Health standards.
So is it really worth it to spend --
Well, that's not up to me, that's up to them.
Well, okay. That's fine, and I've heard that you're going to put it to a vote. If you do, I expect that you will send out factual information, not slant it with twisted statistics. We're not a bunch of fools in this community. We can read through, see through the bullshit that you folks have put out in the past, so I urge you to, if that's the route you're going to go, which I assume that you're not going to slant that information. So as we all know, the city's drinking water gets tested on a regular basis, the city engineer can verify the frequency. Bolton and Mink's value engineering study, I learned from that that it's going to save me $200 in water softening costs, yet my rates, water rates are going to go from $800 a year up to $200, $200 a year. That $200 in savings, you don't have to be a financial wizard to figure out that's not a good deal for me. And of course, none of you folks are going to be affected by the increased water rate, so it really has no, you have no skin in the game. You have no, you know, it doesn't really matter to you how much the rest of us have to fork over for a system that's not needed, because our drinking water meets the standards. Most of that water that's going to be put through, that's going to be used, most of that high purity reverse osmosis water is going to end up going down my toilet, down my washing machine drain, my kitchen sink drain, and be used to water my garden. Less than 1 percent, on average, the average person uses 100 gallons of water per day. Less than 1 percent of that is used for drinking water. So it would make much more sense for people to put in, if they want high purity reverse osmosis water to drink, they can put in a point-of-use system in their home that would be way more cost-effective, would waste a lot less water than the high rejection rate of the reverse osmosis systems. Brian DeWolf, and I don't know if he's one of the people presenting tonight from Bolton and Mink, but he was quoted in an article that was published on the Minnesota Department of Health website, and he stated that only four out of every, he worked, Bolton and Mink was involved in installing a RO system for the city. was involved in installing a RO system for the city of Madison, Minnesota. And he said that four of every five gallons entering the plant ends up going, that ends up going to consumers. The problem is that only four of every five gallons ends up going to consumers. And he quotes, and I quote, he said, "One of the real, that's one of the real drawbacks of reverse osmosis systems, a high level of rejection." So I urge you to consider that. You're wasting, you're ninety percent, ninety-nine percent of that water that you're going to be purifying gets wasted. Besides that, thirty-three percent of it ends up going down the drain, and the city will have to incur millions of dollars in additional sewer assessment charges. My third area of concern are the potential conflicts of interest that I've been hearing about between, among Bolton and Mink, Wigan and Wigan Water Technologies, the violation of open meeting laws and other issues that Jane Norling and Dave Kolb has brought up tonight. These issues do leave the city open to liability, which I think should be a great concern to the city attorney. I'm amazed, first of all, I'm embarrassed to be a resident of this city, and I'm embarrassed. I feel sorry for you folks because you've been duped by one of our residents, and I think we all know who that is. You've been following his lead, and I feel sorry that you haven't been able to recognize that he's leading you down a very slippery path. So in light of these, in light of these allegations of collusion and conflict of interest and leaving the city open to liability, I am formally requesting that Bolton and Mink and Wigan Water Technologies be removed from consideration for the water treatment project. And I hope that you all take what everybody here is saying to heart. We mean it. It took Cheryl Fisher's resignation to wake me up. I've been in a coma for the last twenty years, apparently. I haven't been following what's going on. So I thank her for getting me involved, and I hope that helps wake up the rest of this community because this behavior cannot continue.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Good evening. It's Kevin Suprel, sixteen forty-one Sunnybrook Circle. Mayor, members of the council staff, thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight, I appreciate it. I also appreciate what all of you do who sit behind this desk. I also appreciate everyone who shows up here. Takes a lot of time. I wish I had more time to be more involved. I know I'm not a familiar face at these meetings, I would like to be. But I feel pretty compelled to be here tonight. I do follow along. I read The Laker every week, I talk to my friends and neighbors, and I also watch the videos. And what I've seen, heard, and read lately is really troubling to me. I'm not grateful for that. I'm upset by that. I'm here tonight to talk about what I'm hearing might be some significant staff changes. And I'm here to tell you that I think that's a very bad idea. One of those staff changes might take place tonight. Right now, this room and this city is filled with turmoil and controversy. And that is a terrible environment. After hearing what I heard earlier tonight, that is unquestionably a hostile environment. Making significant changes to staff, firing staff in an environment like that opens the door to lengthy public hearings and undoubtedly litigation. That is an avoidable taxpayer expense that I'm not willing to pay for. Not to mention the fact that, right now, more than ever, you need these people that sit on your flanks desperately. We need them. We need their knowledge. We need their experience. We need that stability. Because who knows what this, who's going to be in these chairs in January? We don't know that. Maybe two, maybe zero, if there's truth to the open meeting violations. I don't know. A new mayor, a new council, a new city administrator? That's a very, very disturbing prospect to me. I'm very troubled by that. I don't know if what I hear, what I see, and what I read is true. I, I tell you, I, I'm very upset by everything. I'm more upset now. I don't know what's true. But in your words, Madam Mayor, it's mostly, or most of it is baseless. To me, that means some of it's true. And I can only imagine that if there are significant staff changes later tonight, or over the coming weeks, if staff starts packing their bags, saying, "I can't take this environment anymore," that tells me it's true. And I don't think any one of you want to send that message tonight. Thank you.
Tom Donahue.
I just want to thank the city for creating the rules so we got fire protection.
Why would you let him talk? Why would you let him talk?
Because he's on the list. He's a resident.
Why not? Why isn't he in jail?
Yeah, why not? I haven't
You too.
Oh, you know what? I miss Jim Blakeway. I thought you moved out of town.
Well, I did. Well, I, four months ago, moved to a neighboring community, and today, eight different people that were my neighbors four months ago asked me to come and speak for them. So I am speaking for Joe Anderson and Molly Loomis from thirty-six fifty-two Kings Point Road, Ann Christian from thirty-four forty Kings Point Road, Mark and Mary Anger from thirty-five ten Kings Point Road, Dale and Deb Jorgensen, and Mary Risinger of thirty-four sixty-six Kings Point Road. And it seems to all of us that you've got yourself in a bit of a hornet's nest here, and the city in a bit of a hornet's nest as well. This is bad. This is not good. I, I know you can see this is not good. Some things that came right off the top of my head, just sitting right there, was we lost the chair at the LMCD since you guys have gotten on board. We lost the police chief. We lost the fourteen-year mayor, who was incredibly well-respected. And it sounds like you're working on a longtime solid individual, our city administrator, Mike Funk. I pray to God that doesn't happen because I'm not so sure what's going to happen in the future here, and he's got a lot of seniority around here, knows what's going on. The people voted here, and I lived here for twenty years, the people voted here expecting openness and ethics. I, I can remember these campaign promises and this outrage that you expressed about the openness and listening to the people. For crying out loud, you listen to the people. They're talking to you. This isn't working. There are jobs on the line, there are business reputations on the line, there are your reputations on the line. The media will increasingly ask questions. This is not good. This should end. Soon. I personally feel, and the eight people that I am speaking for feel, that all four of you should resign.
I want to thank every one of you for all the hard work you do, and I've seen all you guys, and you're putting in all kinds of time trying to get to the bottom of things. It's not business as usual. You're not just rubber-stamping things as was done in the past, and God bless you for that. I, I did hear some comments here from, that there's good people that are working here at the city, and I agree. There are a lot of good people here working. Terry Wonderful, she's putting in all this time answering Russ Fisher's data practice requests, and she's not getting paid for a lot of it, as you know, because she's, time has maxed out. God bless you for, for doing that. You're a wonderful employee. Mr. Grimm, you're great. And Chief Falls, I can't say enough good things about you. You know, we're just blessed to have you here, especially after a prior chief. But, and before then, I mean, our chief before, here he was hiring a, a guy that got indicted for wrongdoing, and we were hiring him to make a video to promote the police station. How wrong is that? And they were using police equipment to advertise this gentleman's goods that he had for sale. Again, not something that I'm proud of. We had people on the council here selling furniture from their firm to the city. Not something I think is a good thing. What a breath of fresh air for all of you to be here. And, and Dave, I mean, you're, you're talking about me, you're talking about these people being disrespectful, or Jerry being disrespectful in his email. And it was disrespectful. Would I have written that note? I would not have. But to see if he reduced speech, you bet he does. But for you to make comments, and for us over here to make comments that this is disrespectful. Two weeks ago, I was outside investigating here, and you both told me six to eight occasions that I'm mentally ill. That is not okay. I'm not mentally ill. I was at Marquette University, I graduated the top in my class. I'm not mentally ill.
Respectfully, I believe you're mentally ill.
Okay, let's, let's focus.
Is that? Let me say this, and I, I talked to other people, they're not going to take the time to come up here and thank you. We're, your time is precious, we're not going to waste it taking more time than we should. But basically, on behalf of most of the citizens, and you know what most people think, we saw in the last two elections, what most people think. God bless you and thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Bolton and Mink water treatment feasibility study.
Yeah, I'm a
Well, somebody, where's
Jane. I signed up after her.
What's your name? What's the other?
Oh, I'm Katie Appley.
No. Oh, okay.
And Jane Norton.
Okay. David's question. Okay, Jane, go ahead.
After the last meeting, does anybody here think that was an accident? I, oh, people who went ahead of me have already covered some of the idea, the points that I was going to bring across. The, I do totally agree with the hostile workplace, and I can't imagine that this two-plus hours that went till twelve-thirty in the morning after the last meeting was not a, another hostile workplace interaction. But my concern tonight is the, that this council is not following due process in their treatment of the employees, which can easily result in wrongful termination actions and create huge liabilities for our city. And everyone in this room is going to have to pay for it. The city of Greenfield thought they knew how to do a performance evaluation. They paid out four thousand dollars to settle the wrongful termination case caused by their mayor and council. It also resulted in the cancellation of the city's liability insurance through the League of Minnesota Cities Trust. I, I'm going to talk about the performance evaluation to be done later this evening on our city administrator. And I don't care what you want, you want to call this action a termination of contract, refusal to renew, request for resignation, termination of employment, it doesn't matter. If you intend to sever Mike Funk from his city administrator position, you have to perform due diligence procedures and obtain relevant input and document this input in the important performance evaluation. If not, you're being extremely unfair to the employee and the residents of the city. Now, I just jotted down thirteen different agencies, organizations, and committees that provide vital service to our city that require frequent interactions working with our city administrator. And I'm going to save some time tonight, and I'm just going to rattle right through them, and I am not going to ask this as a question because we're not going to take the time tonight, but I'd be very interested to find out if you have input in the performance evaluation from any of these. And that would be the Metropolitan Council, the Mound, and the City of St. Boniface's Fire Chiefs, because they provide that fire service, City of Victoria that performs our building inspections, Three Rivers Park District, Watershed District, chairs of our own internal committees for parks, planning, and roads. That we have legal contracts with the Local Union of Forty-Ninth for our public works employees, two business contacts for law enforcement labor services because they separately handle police officers and police supervisors. All of these should have had a chance to put input into that document. The Westonka School District. And then the most important of all, the people that work inside this building with daily interactions, and for some of them, reporting relationships with the administrator. What about our residents? Neighborhood Watch, block captains? How about the residents of Game Farm Road who worked so extensively with our administrator on their road paving project? The, another thing that really should be in there is the recent survey, the most recent survey for the city. The firm which compiled this data reported that Minutrista residents gave service provided by city staff the highest rating of all the surveys they compiled for our metro area. This should be included in the review because this current administration was responsible for the delivery of those services. You should also be documenting that during this current review period, Mike has earned the accreditation of the ICMA, the International City County Management Association. Continuing his education to this level shows his commitment to his profession and to the very high ICM Code of Conduct and Professional Ethics. It also demonstrates what has already been said of how valuable he is to us right now. If you do not have any input from these agencies and committees, or from the city's staff, or from Minutrista residents, I have to assume that you want Mike gone just because you don't want to work with him. And I'm going to go on a limb here and say that that just could be because Mike and our former mayor Fisher worked hard to keep facts straight and dealings ethical. I'm left very fearful that you might have decided to base your entire performance evaluation on the input of a select few citizens. The public records now being disclosed have also been live entertainment for me. There was a series of emails that was dated on March twenty-fifth of this year that all have the same subject, Mike's contract. This includes a request from Mr. Christians to Ann Hunt that asks, "Do you have the original showing the term when his existing contract is up for renegotiations? Thanks." All right, here. Hunt's response to Christians just five minutes later is, "Tom Notch may have it." Ann. Now, if this is, if this is a readily, if this is a readily available public document, why is Hunt going to a private citizen to obtain it? And if it is not a public document, why did Hunt believe Notch had it in his possession? But I think I figured that out. In December, there is an email, dated December twenty-two, twenty thirteen. And this is from Tom Notch to Ann. "I realize that early in January, the committee assignments will be made. Hopefully, we, we can get two people on the personnel committee who are not afraid of giving Funk his walking papers." Sounds to me like now Hunt is helping, or excuse me, that now Notch is helping Hunt make committee assignments. Doesn't make me feel any better or sleep better at night. So the big question is, folks, who is actually controlling the decisions on this board? Non-elected, destructive, private citizens? And if he is the sole input of your due diligence process for the city administrator's performance review, you are facing big troubles. I ask the council to consider the legal and financial ramifications of their next action, as well as the effects of the loss of Mike's administrative and management expertise. Our city is about to enter huge projects for a water treatment plant, the Red Oak Development, the Carlson Project. We need that experience. And as has always been mentioned And, as has always been mentioned, the upheaval of the major city election in less than seven months. At this point, please be aware that I am now addressing our city attorney, not the council. Mr. Beatty, we have not met before. I have two questions for you, and the first relates to what I have just said, and I ask for your permission to pose that now.
I'm not sure, are you asking me to respond?
Yes. If, I believe that.
No, this is not a time for response.
I believe that Mayor Hunt.
This is a time for a comment.
Will make the comment then, and he can reply at his leisure. Have you been given the opportunity to review the city administrator's performance document and supporting materials which the council intends to present tonight? And that is for the purpose of evaluating what potential legal liabilities the city is exposed to by the structure or the content of that documentation. And, uh, I think it's best if I just go ahead with my second question now then. Do you recommend that this council not commit the city to a major construction contract or terminate integral staff until the investigation that I requested into the malfeasance is completed? And you can address those, as I said, at your leisure.
Okay, Wendy Applegate.
My name is Wendy Applegate. I live at thirty-four eighty Kings Point Road. I have been a resident of Minatrista for thirteen years. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I feel it is unfortunate that we, the citizens, have to work so hard to fight for what is right, that we have to come in here and remind you what you promised us. And it is even more unfortunate that we have to have an attorney investigate our city council. I can't imagine what people think as they look at this front-page article about citizens ask city attorney to investigate council. It embarrasses me. With that said, I just thought I'd read you a list of your, some reminders of what you promised the citizens of Minatrista. One, Ann Hunt's 2010 campaign flyer stated that she is passionate about citizen involvement in government. Two, Ann Hunt and Arlene Donahue's joint campaign website called WeListenMinatrista.com with Mr. Vanderlinde and Mr. Christians listed as supporters states, "Our mission is to listen respectfully to the citizens of Minatrista. We want them to voice their concerns, opinions, and needs, so we will be able to make better decisions that reflect their priorities." In the November thirteenth, 2010 issue of The Laker, Ann Hunt wrote, "My role is to represent the entire city as an elected official." I really hope that doesn't mean just a handful of your supporters, but the entire city. And in October, on the October twenty-third, 2010 issue of The Laker, Arlene Donahue wrote, "I believe listening to the residents about their priorities is a must." In that same issue, Bob Christians wrote, "I have had an opportunity to spend time with Ann Hunt and Arlene Donahue. I am confident that once Ann and Arlene are elected, the residents of Minatrista will again have a voice in our city." Well, here is your voice, right here. Thank you. I'm not done. Also, in October sixteenth, 2010 issue of The Laker, Mark Vanderlinde wrote, "The residents of Minatrista deserve representatives that will listen to your concerns." And, and finally, Mayor Hunt's message adopted by the Minatrista City Council on April twenty-first, 2014 is, "We encourage all of our residents to get involved. We work for you." Yes, Mayor Hunt, you are correct. You do work for us. And we don't like what is going on here and don't like the hostile environment that you have created for this staff. We don't like that our city staff is being run out, quitting, and having to resign. In my children's school, that would be called bullying. I am truly sorry. I am truly sorry that our staff has had to endure this. I'm going to apologize to you because I don't think you're going to get that apology from the council. This staff has worked well together for quite some time. They've always kept our city's finances and best interests at top priority. For many years, we have received extremely good ratings and things have run smoothly. So now that you have heard what the people of Minatrista have to say and what they want, it is time to make good on your campaign promises. I can't believe you will ignore a room full of people, since you obviously feel so strongly about listening to the people. It is time to stop listening to that handful of campaign supporters you have and start listening to the majority, as you promised. I would like to make a request that you move the closed session in regards to Mike Funk's employment status up on the agenda, because we will be waiting for you when you come out to make sure you have heard us and that you have made good on your promises to listen to us. You can either do the right thing for the city and the people, or you can burn down the village. This is your moment of truth. Thank you.
Our next item is number three, Bolton and Mink Water Treatment Feasibility Study. Seth Peterson.
Thank you. I have a presentation this evening. There you go. So you have in front of you that I delivered tonight, the copy of the feasibility study. And, um, so this presentation will just go through that, kind of walk you through this, the feasibility report. The, kind of the layout of the feasibility report is this, talk about water supply and demand projections. A lot of these things are repeats from, from what you've done in the past. Just so everybody knows, I'm Seth Peterson with Bolton and Mink, so I've been up here before. So these are kind of the highlights of the, or the chapters of the feasibility study. Water supply and demand projections, drinking water quality, evaluation of alternatives, project costs, which will include both capital costs and operation and maintenance costs, and then conclusions and project schedule. April seventh, about a month ago, city council selected Bolton and Mink from a list of multiple, several consultants. April tenth, we had a kickoff meeting here with city staff. Bolton and Mink staff came, and we met with city staff. We did an information request. City staff's been great to work with and got all the information for us so we could get moving on this very tight timeframe for the schedule. April twenty-fourth, we came back with some alignments and layouts for the, the proposed alternatives that we come up with, and went through those again with staff and just, I know Mark Erickson is not here tonight, but Mark's been outstanding to work with, very helpful, and so is staff, working with the administrator, Brian Grimm, just everyone's been helpful with getting us information. So we do appreciate that, because in this tight timeframe for this, it's important that we get that information. And then, just last week, we met quickly with, on May first, with Three Rivers Park District, and just wanted to go through some alignments with them, because we're going to come through, looking at some areas with their properties. So, wanted to get their feedback also. So, moving into water supply and demand projections, and, you know, just look at a summary of the existing wells, existing storage, historical water usage, and those are all very important. Because what it does is you tie in and you look at where your population. And if you recall this study, what you asked us to do is go out and look at to twenty-thirty. So, sixteen years from now, we're looking out to twenty-thirty, what's required? So that's everything from water treatment to wells, to towers, storage, distribution mains, raw water mains, whatever it would take to provide water to the eventual growth area of Minatrista at twenty-thirty. So you can see the population, about thirteen thousand, a little more than thirteen thousand. Essentially, the assumptions we went on is that all the new population growth in Minatrista will basically be on the water system. A little bit of the existing wa, uh, residents, residential users may get onto water system as you run water main by their areas, but mainly, it's all the new development that's coming in will be all driving for the water main, or for the water users for the future. What we do here, and some of this is hard to see, I apologize, but this just looks at, we broke out the water systems, and your water systems here, just to, you have really three water systems. You have the north water system, you have the central water system, and then you have your south water system. South water system, you kind of have the area over the southwest part, over around by St. Bonnie, and then you have the southeast portion. And so, we looked at each one of these areas, because each area has a little different growth projections, and so we looked at each area, and we can look at, the city has information on historical day average, average day demand from future projection, and we can go all the way out, and we can look at what our total average day demand is for twenty-thirty, and then also our demand in twenty-thirty. And as you come down here, the bottom line will kind of tell you what you need. And so, from this, we can determine what you need for additional wells in the future, and additional wells if you would need RO also. On this, what we assumed is, we assumed a peaking factor of two-point-five that has ranged anywhere from probably five or more down to that two to two-and-a-half number. It's probably averaged more around that three number, but the council has said, and city has said, hey, we really want to keep that peaking factor down to two-and-a-half to three. You've been doing some things with your rates, et cetera, to do that. And so, our assumption here was using a peaking factor of two-point-five. Also with that assumption is that we assume we're treating up to two-point-five, so that peaking factor, we're providing treatment to that. The city could decide to say, hey, we, we don't want to provide a full treatment all the way up to that peak of two-point-five, and you may pick a number, something less than that. So that would impact all the numbers in the analysis here to date. Same thing with storage, you look at the number of wells you need, and here's storage, and basically, you just break it down in each individual area, as you have growth out there to twenty-thirty. The things in parentheses show at twenty-thirty what your deficit would be in storage. And so, for the north area, you have enough volume there, you do not need an additional tower. Central area, you're a deficit of over a hundred thousand. South area, a deficit of over seven hundred thousand gallons. And if you start combining some of these areas, and that comes back into some of the alternatives we're looking at, but you see there's a deficit there. So there's a need for additional storage in the future. So that was the first section of the report. The next section, we really get into drinking water quality, and this is just a rehash of, of what everybody here knows. You know, you have some water quality issues. Well two A up in the north has exceeded the maximum contaminant level for radionuclides for gross alpha and radium. Some of your future wells, you've done some test wells in the south area, have also shown a potential exceedance for the maximum contaminant level for radionuclides, which would be gross alpha and then combined radium. All of your wells currently exceed the secondary standard, so the gross alpha and the radium, those are primary drinking water standards. Secondary standards are things like iron and manganese. And all of your wells exceed the secondary standard for iron. Three of your wells exceed the secondary standard for manganese. And so, that's when you get the rusty water, the brown-colored water, and those are the water complaints that, that you guys are dealing with. It also happens, as you have these long distribution lines, as you go out, because you're not removing any of that, that sits in there, starts to oxidize, and when you turn on your faucet or your shower or whatever, you start to get that rusty water. One of the things that you asked us to take a look at, and that's been talked about quite a bit, are emerging contaminants, or contaminants of emerging concern, CECs, and the United States Geological Survey has a list of these, that's about two-hundred-and-fifty long, and they continue to add to it as they develop technologies to test for these and sample for these, and they'll continue to add to that list of emerging contaminants. The specific health risks for all of these are not specifically known, but a lot of them are endocrine disruptors, which are means hormone, hormone system, it starts to affect your hormone system, and then also carcinogens or some cancer-causing agents. Most of these compounds come from a variety of, of sources, a lot of them are from industrial uses, from pharmaceuticals and personal care products. You see that PPCP, that's what that indicates. These are typically introduced into the environment through industrial activities, through human waste, from landfill leachate. So those are kind of the areas where you'll see how that gets introduced into the ground. And if it gets into the ground, it has a potential to get into the groundwater. Out of those two-hundred-and-fifty that we talked about from the USGS, the United States Environmental Protection Agency has a list of thirty, and twenty-eight of those are contaminants, two of those are viruses. And that's, of those thirty from the EPA list, those are the ones that would be the next ones that would end up as a drinking water standard, something like a radium, arsenic's on the, on the list right now as a drinking water parameter. Something from that thirty would be the next one that would, could be a, a new drinking water standard. Exactly which one it would be, we don't know, but that's what the EPA is studying. So it's those thirty are the ones you want to probably be the most concerned with. From that, you look at that, and you say, well, okay, we're concerned with these emerging contaminants, but how do you treat for them? And for a lot of these parameters, these contaminants, there's really only a couple things you can do. And so, there are certain things that work on certain of them. There's coagulation, and, and enhanced coagulation, there's activated carbon, advanced oxidation process you can do, and then reverse osmosis. And so, those are really the technologies that are used to remove these contaminants. Various health risks and testing methods for these will continue to evolve, we talked about that already a little bit, highlighted that. As technologies advance, we can test these even more in the water. But RO is one of the options up there that provides a positive barrier to almost every one of those contaminants, and has the highest quality water possible with a single treatment process. Some of those you have to combine treatment processes with RO. You can do one treatment process, and it'll take care of most of those. So it is a barrier to viruses, other emerging contaminants. So if that's a goal for the city, then that's something that they want, you should take a look at and want to include RO in your, your decisions. Or, if it's something you're like, well, maybe not now, but we want to continue to make sure we have the options for it, at least make provisions for it, and there are simple things you can do in the construction of a water treatment facility to make sure you're ready to add that on in the future, should and if you want to do that. So water treatment, we'll kind of stay on this water treatment, but all the options we looked at will have these first six items on it. Aeration, detention, filtration, all those are products of the water treatment process. Filtration is where you filter out the particulate, the iron and manganese particulate. We have high-service pumping with a clear well and a reservoir, so you're going to pump that water out into your system. You have chemical feed and disinfection, similar to what you have now, you already do that, but now it'd be on a finished water product. And then backwash reclamation. So you're going to, you, the filter gets dirty, you need to backwash it and clean it. That water typically would go to waste. You put in a backwash facility so you can reclaim that water, bring about ninety percent of that water back into your facility and reuse it. Ten percent would go to waste. So all these options would have aeration, detention, filtration, high-service pumping, chemical feed disinfection, and then the reclaim tank, the backwash reclaim tank. For an option that you asked us to take a look at would be the reverse osmosis option. And so, that is an option that we look at for all the alternatives we have, and with that would be an RO reject water EQ basin, because of the SAC fees that you would have. With our reverse osmosis, you have a lot more waste discharged going to the sanitary sewer. And so, the way council works is they look at your peak flows coming out, and we say, let's hold some of that water, get it down to our average, thereby reducing your SAC fee. And so, that's our method for helping reduce SAC fees. So, when we look at all these options, for the RO options, the reverse osmosis and the EQ basin would be included in those. Little table here, this just shows these treatment processes, I just got done talking about aeration, gravity filtration, disinfection, and then RO. And then a list of various parameters here. Some of these are just normal parameters. You have iron here, you have manganese. Iron and manganese are the two issues you have. Gravity filtration is what removes those. You'll see something with aeration here, we have carbon dioxide and hydrogen sulfide, those are gases, and through the aeration process, if you have that in your water, those would escape through that treatment process. With disinfection, with using chlorine disinfection or another type of disinfection, you can remove ammonia and bacteria, and then also down here in the bottom, you can kill viruses with feeding a chlorine solution. And then RO, if you look at it, RO basically checks all the boxes except the two gases, so they can't remove that, but they will remove everything else. And what they'll do is, a filter can remove iron down to a certain level. RO will make sure that it's essentially zero. There's almost zero anyway with the filter, but it'll just remove things even further, and that's what reverse osmosis does. It's a, it's a, it's an incredible barrier for removing anything that's in the water. Another analysis you asked us to do was look at steel versus concrete filters. Our analysis, and through our experiences, that anything over five hundred gallons a minute really lends itself to being a concrete filter. And the reason is, is because steel filters have a shelf life or a life of about thirty years, and so, in about every fifteen years, you have to go in and redo the underdrains, there are steel underdrains in there, replace the media, they're not as efficient as a concrete filter is. And so, for these reasons, at five hundred gallons a minute, anything above five hundred gallons a minute would be a concrete filter, anything under five hundred would be a steel filter. So this- So, this, now where we get into the evaluation of all the alternatives, and what you asked us to take a look at were really two options. A decentralized system is what you have right now. You have your north system, your central system, and then your south system. And so, that's what that option is. And then you asked us to look at the centralized system, the bottom one. And that would be one treatment facility to treat the entire area of Minutrista. As we looked at this and started laying it out, we saw, and I wanted to evaluate a north system and then a south and central system combined together, and wanted to take a look at that, just because that eliminates the need to run raw water main up to the north. And so, we did evaluate that system also. And so, this figure here shows the decentralized system. And this is hard to see, there's a lot of information on this, this is in your packet, a lot of it, but this is a north system, this is a central system, and then the entire cell system is connected together. And the way we looked at this for this evaluation and for a lot of these was, you know, we have one major area here, we have another major area here. So, we looked at a water treatment plant down in the southwest area, water treatment plant down in the southeast area to serve the south area. There's a water treatment plant, we have multiple locations, we picked one that we thought made the most sense, and any of these routing here that we have are preliminary right now. Obviously, things would change if you move forward with this, these might be the routes, you may jog it a little bit differently, but in order to put these together with, based on our meetings with city staff and with Three Rivers Park District, this is what we came up with for our options for running water main. And so, you'd have a water treatment plant up in the north area with adding a well, water treatment plant and a new well here in the central system, we're adding additional wells down here, four new wells and two water treatment plants to, for the decentralized system. This is the north and north system by itself, which is up here, just like the decentralized system we just talked about. And then, this entire area then, the central and south area, would be served by a single treatment facility located about in the middle, right here, I believe is where we have it located, with, you'd have multiple wells, you have tower, you have raw water main running, finished water main running throughout the system. So, that's alternative two. Alternative three is just one central treatment facility, so we're back to a treatment facility in this location, kind of in the center of the entire area of Minutrista, but we have water main now looping everything together. So, we're tying in the north area, the south area, or the south area, and then the central areas all together as one system. So, with this option, what happens with this is as you, these are kind of the parameters as we look at it, what's needed for tower capacities for various options, what's needed for reservoir or additional storage that we are providing, and then also, what's the filter capacity? Here's the filter capacity for the, filter capacity here, here's the number of wells needed, and then also additional filter capacity if you go to RO. The reason you need additional filter capacity for RO is because RO, you don't produce 100% of water through RO. And so, if we want 1,000 gallons a minute through RO, you'd have to feed about 1,200 into it to get that 1,000 out. So, you'd need some, in some cases, some additional wells. So, what this really comes down to is then the cost. And I apologize, this appears it's...
Can I adjust the focus here?
Yeah.
You had it?
The only thing you could do is zoom in and then just kind of pan across the slide to see.
Okay, well, we'll just run with it here. So, this is a big table, and there's a lot of information on this table. So, we have the decentralized system, in these, in this column here, we have the south and, the south central and the north system in this column here, these columns, and then the centralized system here. In this darker color right here, this is the construction subtotal. Now, this, remember, this is out to 2030. So, this is everything needed to meet requirements for 2030. So, you're at a population of over 13,000, all that new population's being served by what you're looking at here. And so, at, you've got construction costs, and then you add in your engineering costs, so you're at 24.6 for the decentralized, just over 20, almost 21,000 for the south central and north, and the same, about similar number here, about 21,000 for the centralized system. Adding RO, and this added in a line item here, so this adds in RO, this adds in the SAC charges, this adds in additional wells, any of that that's required there, you'll see where those numbers are, anywhere from, once you add everything in, about 32.5 down to 28, down to 27.5. And this number here just helps break those out. These are those final numbers again that you're looking at, gravity filtration only and gravity filtration with RO. You can see, as you move to RO, central plant on the capital cost is the most cost-effective, and between the central and that second option there, essentially identical cost. However, capital costs are just one piece of the equation. The other piece you need to look at are what the operation and maintenance costs are. And the operation and maintenance costs include the entire gamut of additional costs above and beyond to run the system from what you're currently doing today. And so, you look at heating and electricity and ventilation and all that for each of these facilities, you're looking at the pumping costs, because you have to pump out of these treatment facilities into the treatment or into your system, you have chemical costs for the chemical treatment before filtration, and obviously, as you go out of the system, and then any yearly SAC fees. So, you have SAC fees also, I've talked about the backwash reclaim, some of that water's going to the sanitary sewer, that's included in here. Also, if you did RO and the RO options, those SAC fees are also included in the operation and maintenance costs. And as you look, when you have a decentralized system versus down to a central system, because here we're operating four treatment facilities, here we're operating one treatment facility, there's an economy of scale there. You're operating one building, you're not heating multiple buildings, there's additional horsepower, because it's not as convenient. So, when you do one treatment facility, it's more cost-effective. Also, you have less time driving around between the treatment facilities, so a central treatment facility has the lowest operation and maintenance costs. And so, we ran these numbers for 2015 and also 2030. So, now that you have the operation and maintenance costs, along with now the capital costs, you can do a present worth analysis. This analysis, we ran it at three and a half percent for 15 years, was the analysis that we ran. And so, you take the capital costs that we had before, and then you take that present worth and you turn that annual cost of O and M into a present worth cost, and then you add the two together, so you can compare apples to apples. And when you do that, the central treatment facility for both options is the most cost-effective option. And especially as you see, you know, you're saving almost 150, $200,000 per year in costs, in operation and maintenance costs with the central treatment facility. One of the other things you asked us to take a look at was RO savings, you've seen some of this before. Went back and re-looked at the salt savings and then the regeneration water that you would have from running a water softener, we just looked at water softeners, and so, this would be salt savings, this is based on connection with four people and using your typical annual household per day, which is about 150 gallons per capita per day. That's what your usage works out to be, is about 150 gallons per person per day. So, that's 600 gallons a day in a home, so if you have less than that, savings would be less. If you have more than that, savings would be greater. So, obviously, with a project like that, that you look out 20 years and you see big dollar amounts, how do you finance a project like that? And there are a multitude of ways to finance projects like this. General obligation bonds are one option, doing assessing either a part of the project or portions of that project, you can do that. And then there's also the state revolving loan program. That's a great program, it's administered through the Public Facilities Authority in conjunction with the Minnesota Department of Health. They offer a one point, one and a half percent discount, so if the current bond rate for the state's 3%, and that's when you sell your bonds through the state for that project, you would then be able to get your interest at 2%. So, three and a half minus the one and a half would give you the 2% term. And that's about where it's at right now with the Public Facilities Authority, and their term is for 20 years. So, it's a very good program, and the city right now is actually taking a look at that and started the process to get on it. There's no obligation for the city to do that, it just gives them an alternative to look at how to finance this project long-term. So, conclusions, the present worth analysis shows that the centralized system is the most cost-effective for either of the options we looked at, and also with, for the RO option. And here is just a prop, proposed schedule, this is similar to what was in our feasibility study previously, and you see, we're right here in the beginning stages of this. Placement on the PPL and IUP, that's that funding program through the Public Facilities Authority, that's the project priority list and the intended use plan. There's no obligation for the city, you just get on that list, and it's a good opportunity for the city to look at that as a potential financing option in the future. And if you wanted to move forward on the fast track, this would be a fast track schedule. This is the fastest you could move forward with this project. Anything you can take longer for this, but this would be the fastest you could move forward with this. With that, I have nothing else.
You had mentioned you had talked to Three Rivers.
I did.
What areas were you discussing, I guess?
We discussed actually everything. I'll just go back. One of the things that was interesting with Three Rivers, they had, they had very nice comments, they were very appreciative of coming in, and I had to explain to them this wasn't happening like tomorrow or anything like that, but that we just wanted to get some feedback from them and get their input. What I neglected to tell you on these is the orange shaded areas are areas of Three Rivers Park District property, and then we also have the Dakota Rail Trail right through here. And so, we use that corridor for areas for running raw water main and finished water main. We also have areas where we're going adjacent to Three Rivers Park District and also down here. They had very positive comments about everything, they want to make sure that we're working, you know, get any discussions with them, obviously upfront. They do not, trying to put a facility on their property is probably not very likely. They don't typically like to do that unless all other alternatives have been exhausted, and your alternative can't be at cost too much somewhere else, so you really have to have no other option to use their property. But we did talk about, on this option here, going, at one time, we had a line going up this way to serve the north area, kind of cutting through that property up there at Gale Woods, and they actually asked us to, said, well, I think it might make more sense over there, and actually, in the tighter scheme of things, engineering-wise, it works a little better to put it this way also. And so, there's just some things like that. We talked about easements, if you take an easement on their land, they explained, you know, we need similar park property back and some, or some other thing given back to us if you put an easement, because basically, they look at an easement, even though it's a pipe under the ground, 10 feet under the ground, nothing's going to, you know, doesn't disturb anything on the surface, they still can't use that for something in the future. What they did like, though, is that they're looking to try to put a trail corridor up through this area, and they saw the potential water main going through this area or some area in some, something like this area, and so, they were very pleased with that, and they thought, well, that would be a nice partnership to work together with the city. So, they were looking forward very much, they liked linking the two, at least the central and the cell system together, because that would give them a potential conduit for running that, that trail through there. And that could be, if we ever had to get an easement from them on somewhere else, you may be able to trade some of that back and forth with getting, you're running your raw water main while they could then put their trail in after the fact. So, those are the type of comments we got from them.
And these costs, are they including land acquisitions?
They do include land acquisition, yep, for all options for, you know, and we don't know, you may be able to work out a deal where you get land, you know, as in a swap or something, but we made the assumptions that you had to. Anywhere there was private easements needed, we assumed cost for that. All the water treatment facilities, we assumed we had to purchase that land, so there's land costs in there for that. And then additional, when I talked about that, that RO reject basin, that takes land, so there's land costs in for that option also. So, their land costs are included in all the estimates. Thank you. You're welcome.
I have one question. It's our objective here to have the residents who would be using the system make the final decision of which way we go. We want the input from our residents to make the decision, because they're the ones that would be paying for it. And the most important thing, I think, for them to make that decision...
You spoke about the breakdowns.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll start over. It's our objective to, to have our residents who would be using the system to make the final decision of which way we go. For them to make that final decision, I think it's very, very important for them to know and understand the benefits of each alternative, and also, what the cost would be for each one of those alternatives. Somebody spoke earlier today that the cost to go to an RO system wasn't, you know, didn't seem to have the benefits that they felt they should have, and the cost of the astronomical. What I think it's important for them to know is, again, the alternatives and the cost for each alternative, for something that everybody can relate to, and that is, what is my cost per year? Okay? What would be my cost as a user per year? Okay? And take into all the things, real numbers, not guesses, real numbers, so that we can, so when we ask them to make that decision, they can make an intelligent decision.
I completely agree, and I actually think that's the next step, working with Brian and taking these numbers and putting a rate analysis together. And, you know, Brian, Brian and I could work on that together, you can go out, you've worked with Aylers before. I think what's an important thing to look at this, when you look at the rates and you're looking out at 2030, and so, when you do a rate analysis, I think it's important to go out to 2030 with it. The numbers aren't perfect, it's a tool that you're using, but you have to look at, because look at what's going to happen, the amount of growth you're going to have over the next 16 years. And every time you have a connection, you collect connection charges, you have water access charges that you collect also. And so, when you have the amount of users you're going to have coming into the system, that generates a significant amount of money over this 16-year period. And so, as you add new users, obviously, they're paying a usage fee also as you increase, you know, and you're paying for these things like wells and a water treatment plant and storage. But all those things start to, if you look at the whole picture, all the way out, you can project and say, here, here's where we're at, and here's what this is going to make. And I think that's a...
And I want to...
...far the next step.
Thank you for that, because the reason we are here today and the reason we're looking at the different alternatives is because we want something that will go out to 2030. We don't want to have to deal with this or have to address this again. And that was one of the main concerns of looking at different options, so we just don't spend millions of dollars to have something that's going to be obsolete in three to five years. So, that was extremely important for us to do. But again, it's going to be extremely important for the people who are going to be using it to say, hey, this is going to cost me X amount per year, this is going to cost me X amount per year, again, so an intelligent decision can be made, because it's our residents, it's our people here that are going to be actually paying for it. Not the people who are on well water, but the people that are using it.
Absolutely. And that's something we could pull together relatively quickly, we could work with your staff, and you already have a lot of that information, and you just kind of pull it out and you look at it and you say, okay, we, to 2030, we know where your population's going, can assume all those charges coming in, you know how the water, make assumptions for every year, how much population, that then derives how much water you're going to use every year, so then from there, you calculate how much you're getting for user fees every year. Every new connection adds a certain amount of dollars.
Thank you very much, because I really am, that was very, very important to go, so we don't have to address this again in five years.
Right.
Okay.
Counsel, do you have any more questions? I did have a request earlier today for some residents wanting to ask some questions after this presentation, so...
I have a question. Are we going to be converting contaminants? Has the city's water been tested for any of those contaminants at this point? Because it seems to me, we shouldn't be looking at a reverse osmosis system to remove contaminants that don't even exist, if we're supposed to, if we know if they will exist. So, as part of the information, the financial information we're putting together, I would like to see information on water quality tests of the current well water that the city's using, tested for those emerging contaminants, to see if it is even an issue. Because if it's not an issue, I certainly don't think we should be spending eight to 10 million dollars trying to correct the main contaminants that don't even exist. They exist, you know, and they're at levels above health thresholds, which I suppose working contaminants haven't even had health, based assessment, so we don't even know what the health hazards are or what level their health is. But that's the kind of information that we also need to make an informed decision. And I would also like to suggest to the city council, if you hold an informational meeting, not just put out some newsletter or survey. Years ago, when the city was developing their comprehensive plan, that had an informational meeting, the residents would attend them, ask questions. I would request that you, if you have a voting booth available to answer questions that the residents might ask, so that we can make an informed decision, because 11, and the other question is, who's paying for this? Is the city? I mean, are the rest of the taxpayers responsible? Is only the 1,100 households? That's going to be quite costly, when you're, you know, I don't know how many, it's like twice as many to have that many households. Minutrista, and you're making a huge financial commitment and requiring 1,100 households to pay the burden debt, you know? And so, that's something that... And so that's something I think you should be very seriously about. It makes the most sense to start with the gravity filtration system with the capability to expand it to reverse osmosis in the future if needed.
Do you want to address that, Seth?
I don't, I don't know if I have anything to address there.
Okay.
Is there anything you want me to, I think on, I guess the only thing on the water quality test, I, we can, there's some information that the city's been tested already. Department of Health comes around periodically and they test the wells on a, on a cycle basis. And so we can get that and they do, I mean, they come back with force stuff, and so we can take a look at all those. They are looking at, there's probably 200 items on there. Some of them may be related to emerging contaminants. They're looking for things that have been out there in Minnesota before, so they're gonna, they're gonna run it through a whole battery of tests.
Are most emerging contaminants really dealing, concerning what range of emerging contaminants is really in surface water or in well water?
Well, it depends. Not necessarily. Not necessarily. Emerging contaminants can come from just about any source. Surface water is an area where they can be introduced much quicker than groundwater. But in groundwater, you have areas around landfills. And if you have wells around those and it's the groundwater is such that it'll allow that to go down there, you have industrial sites. There are towns like St. Louis Park that deal with, they have certain contaminants that they have to deal with, because they've had, there were certain industries there years and years ago.
Those are well-known industrial sources.
Yep. But, so it's not just, it's not just surface water, it is also groundwater.
So do we do environmental assessments to make sure that any new wells are not gonna be here in any of those industrial contamination sites? And have we done environmental assessments in the past?
Yeah, all part of the siting process through wells. You go through that entire process. It's a process you go through with the Department of Health and the Department of Natural Resources, and you look at all those areas when you're siting wells.
I've been talking to the Department of Health, and I'd suggest that we have somebody from the staff and offer them to talk about those contaminants with the emerging concern, because I don't think they have the same sort of view of that with you. And, you know, I mean, I think, I think we ought to be working on the data rather than something that could, you know, if the hazard is there on all four, you know, reverse osmosis. I don't, I don't see, and I don't know that people are jumping, municipalities are jumping on the bandwagon for reverse osmosis. Reverse osmosis is typically used to treat water for high purity applications. And to remove contaminants such as nitric from groundwater. And that's a very, that's really the primary reason to have, is what we decide to sale the nation. So let's be sure, measure price cut once here before we go down that road. I know you guys are very much, a big part of your business is reverse osmosis, but I don't think it's a good fit for municipalities. So I'd like to suggest that we get somebody, the Department of Health staff in here. And, you know, they say that basically it's a, it's a significance reserve development. I have a question. I notice we have a reverse osmosis system, but it's plastic included. Is there a problem if they use, have a two-way reverse osmosis? Most of the homes are gonna have that. I heard that it won't be way up top.
Well, the reverse osmosis system that we're looking at here, it's different slightly from your house, because you have 100, essentially 100% pure RO water coming out of that. And it's just basically going right to your drinking fountain or your faucet or going through, into your refrigerator. What we'd look at is an 80/20 blend. And so the hardness would be about 100 milligrams per liter. And it's all because of that. You want some hardness in there. It gives it some taste properties. You know, everyone likes a little something with, well, look at your bottle of water. That has, it's gonna say it has some minerals in it, right? And they're gonna put select minerals in it, because it gives it a little taste. Perfectly pure water tastes kind of different.
But you take it out of the water, they have to put something back in?
What we do is it's a blend. So it's a, it's an 80/20 blend, 80% RO water, 20% just filtered water. So means through the gravity filter for your 100%. So if you wanted 1,000 gallons a minute of water, 800 would go through the RO, 200 would blend it back in with your filtered water. End up with a final hardness of about 100 milligrams per liter in grains. That's about five grains.
So it won't have any effect on the copper?
No.
None?
None. If you don't do any other softening at your house, it will not. If you already soften in your house, you're softening already to probably less than 100 grains or 100 milligrams per liter. So you're already at that in your house. If you continue to soften, if you take 100 milligram per liter water, your typical concentration right now is probably 350 to 400 milligrams per liter of hardness. And that's calcium, magnesium, are the two things that make up hardness. We take that down, if you did RO, you'd be about 100 milligrams per liter. If you continued to soften that, so it came into your house, you continue to soften it, just like you do now, you'd bring that down even further. And as you bring that water down even further in hardness, it can become corrosive to copper and other fixtures in your house. So it's something you have to watch. It would be delivered at about 100 milligrams per liter. And then from there, it's a, it's a preference, a homeowner's preference if they want to continue to soften the water. Yes?
I do have two questions. That's our, kind of playing off their questions earlier about the health effects, our potential health effects. The, when I was listening to this, it's kind of like watching the blood commercials, where they throw off about 100 different maladies that you could get if you took this pill. It's really good stuff. What I'd like to see is the actual PBE and what levels, and I think that's part of what the testing would do. Because to throw those out there, if we're at a level of one or two PBE parts per billion, and the level at which it becomes any kind of toxin is up in the 10,000s, is pretty misrepresented. So what I would do is actually bring data, bring the facts as to where we're at. And maybe all that goes away, maybe there are no health effects.
Sure.
The second question I have, really more for the council, is we've had some development projects we've talked about in the past, where we wanted to bring sewer and water in for different developments. And the question was asked for people on the corridor that had no need, that had new wells, new grain fields, et cetera, they were asked to connect or pay a portion of the fee to get it up to the areas that don't currently have that. I guess, do we have, I am, I have, I have a well, so I don't have, as I understand it, a stake in the game, if you put it. But I am concerned that as this perpetuates, I'll be forced to connect or pay for a portion of that connection fee, even though I don't need it. I've got a new, I've got a new pump. I've got a relatively new grain field that I built, half of it and bigger than when I need it. I'm never gonna need it. So I, I don't want to be forced into connecting to try and pay for this project. So I guess I have some kind of connect with the council to develop.
No, you would never be forced to connect. Why would we do that? Why, why would we force you to connect? I mean, no, I mean, it's, it's gonna be, if, you know, for, it's a user fee. I mean, we can't, the city can't say you have to connect to it.
City can't say that.
Well, I, I won't say it. Well, it's, I, I won't say that. I don't, I don't think anybody on this council would say that. Cause I, I wouldn't like it if somebody did it to me.
Go ahead, Jim.
I appreciate the comments here. And there are other entities that are going to make some difference as to who has to pick up that tab. I do think that you ought to be circulating the information beyond just those who are now on city water. I'm here because I have great sympathy, because I have a, I have my own private well, and I think it's in the same aquifer as your city wells, because I have the worst water here, with magnesium, whatever. I put it in a filtration system. But I'm interested in this, and I, I think that there may be others that are. But I think even worse, I, I also think the understanding of the circulation of, you know, of connect, the connectivity of these wells and getting a circular pattern to their flow. A hundred years ago, when I was involved in the city government here, we, we had those south wells. And that was still, that was a problem then, because you have water that was sitting there instead of moving. And it would be good to know what that aspect of this development would, would mean for the improvement of water quality. But also, I, I am concerned, you know, if, if we may not be with private wells affected by it. But what's happening with Met Council, my, my least favorite entity, is, is, and their forcing of density in this area is absolutely ludicrous. It does not fit with what, anything that makes sense. It makes sense where you have, had a little urban core like Mound and these other areas. But to kind of plop out at Red Oak and expect high density, what sense does that make? And it, I mean, some of us have been trying to, trying to work on that for, for years, that what they did with, with the King's Point and all of that, that whole area, and the insistence of that kind of high level. It really isn't in a place that fits with what, where you really need high density. And they're not good at coordinating between, say, transportation, what, what is the, the ones that control transportation? They, they weren't even talking to them. Are, what are they doing here in terms of the kinds of things that they're gonna be forcing with their, with their 2024 plan? Everybody in the city needs to pay attention to that and, and letting their voice be heard. Because they can come in and essentially ruin our city by, by forcing a density that does not make any sense at all. It doesn't, it isn't marketable, and it, I think it affects all of us. But having said that, there are, there are going to be some kinds of developments that may want to have the city water and the sewer charges, sewer access, and, and as, as some natural development is going to occur in those areas. So I think those kind of goals need to be cleared, and the people that are living in those areas should, should know and be a part of, at least maybe not having the same solid noise, but know what the applications are and what the costs will, will be. As, as it grows, the costs that will be spread over a larger base and should be diminished then for the current well, you know, the water, water users and from the public system. So there's, there's a lot of complexity here, and I do respect the fact that you are going route of laying options out and, and allowing people to learn, because I, I think most of us, there are few experts that are, at least some more experts than the rest of us, that need, that, that need to have that information. And I think we, we value good water quality and we also value good public service. So, and then determine whether, what, what we're, what we're willing and able to pay for. And I think the SAC charges meant something different in the past than what they do now. Are, are they, and I, what do they, what does the Met Council base those SAC charges on? Is it the amount of water that flows into the sewer?
Yes.
So, but SAC charges used to be the upfront fee. But now they, now they've added it, so it's an ongoing charge?
Well, it's just like anywhere. It's like you would pay, so you pay an initial SAC fee like you would here, a water connection fee to connect into the water system, plus then you pay user fee for every gallon of water you take. Same thing for the Met Council. They have a SAC fee that you pay for how many SAC units you have. SAC units, 2,500 dollars almost. So you have that 2,500 dollar upfront fee for each SAC unit you're contributing. And then per month or per thousand gallons, I think it's 214. So that's, and it's, it's no different than any other system. It's just on the wastewater system. Yep.
But I really do think more people should know about this, because it, I believe in private property rights too, that people should be able to make some choices about, about this and, and make a determination whether they're going to be part of that system as, as, like, changes will.
I think someone before had asked how many people were on city water, and only a few people had raised their hands. I am on city water, and I had my water tested at my home level, and it had seven times the amount of arsenic tested out by the EPA. And I want the best for my family. And I change the council, we're doing the research, and letting the residents who are on city water make the decision for ourselves. And thank you for gathering the yearly numbers, because that's very important. We freaked out and went out and bought our system, just started drinking the cooking water, and that's been great, but it, we don't know what's gonna happen in the next 15 years with water contaminants. I mean, I bring the age curve down in this room probably by like 10 years. And I think a lot of people who are new coming to Minnetrista are very concerned about these things. And a lot of young families are. And everyone I talk to on Main Street is concerned about what's in the water. Not saying everyone's for RO, but thank you for putting it in front of us, because I don't want to be serving arsenic to my babies.
And how come the, the report that the city put out, the test reports from the Department of Health, showed 1.5 parts per million of arsenic was the result, and the maximum, the MCL level is 10? So I don't know how you end, how could you end up with seven, seven times a month that shows in this test that the city does with the well water?
That's a good question, and you can't call me a liar, but I have a paper where it's lying. But if, this thing happens, right? Because if something happens between leaving the wells and one shows up in our town.
I think that's an issue that should be addressed, and, you know, what's possible problems, that's what we need to deal with. And that's, when you contain reverse osmosis, it's gonna solve that issue. She could spill a lot of the arsenic in her water. It is between the city's well and the line that goes out to her house. Who knows where it's going, though?
Raised a good question with the Met Council in dealing with some of the proposed developments that are going on here. I cite the problem out in Watertown. They built all these new schools and expected all these new houses to pay for it. There aren't any new houses. Nobody bought. They hit a housing crisis. Palmer's Point has been sitting empty for years. Partners went bankrupt. Just because the infrastructure is now going in in some of these areas, there's no guarantee these houses are being connected. There's no guarantee they're even gonna be built. So those, and with the high density requirements that are being made, that I completely agree with you on. It's ridiculous in an area such as Red Oak Gulf where to put in high density numbers that are there with the infrastructure, the roads for people. Once you start seeing the congestion on Highway 7 from King's Point Road, that development shut down. People might go, nope, not moving there. Because there's not enough thought or forethought for what's gonna happen 10 miles down the road. So we're, you're dealing with tangibles that, that aren't there yet. So I would like to see numbers reflect, what if we hit another 2008? What if nothing sells? Because then I get, I, I'm pretty sure that regardless of what you say, that it's only the people on the wells, that you're gonna have to change your mind. So there, there's just some things here that are being predicted for the cost. We need a worst-case scenario on the fact that, that vast majority of those houses may or may not sell. Because there's no restaurants, there's no gas stations, there's nothing out there right now. It's gonna take a long time for these people to decide to buy those houses.
Anybody else have a water treatment question? Do you want to address that?
Just like Madam Mayor, Counsel, just address Ms. Jensen, correct? So I assume you'd want to tell the rest of your story about that when you had those higher levels of arsenic, the city responded very promptly.
That's not true, actually. I, you know, Gary Peters and Mark Erickson's three times, and three times they didn't come get the water for testing.
The, the city tested the water extensively after that, and there has been no arsenic levels found that level that you've discussed. No one questions how the, that arsenic was tested. I mean, you did the home, it was a home test by yourself with Culligan. And the city did respond to that. And I just want to assure the residents that arsenic levels, why there was a high reporting at Ms. Jensen's house is, is unknown, but the city does not have high arsenic levels in our water.
I volunteer at my house. I live at 9079 Lyndland Drive, and I volunteer on my water to be tested whenever you need it to be. I fill up my water, my drinking water in my tap right at the refrigerator every morning. At night, it serves my family with it. We've never had a complaint. I've never thought it was unbreakable. I've never thought it was unbreakable. So, you know, we just need to do some apples to apples and see where it goes.
We do extensive water testing in the city. We do a drinking water reports. We have standards that we're required to meet. Both our engineering firms, WSB and Bolt Mink would tell you that. And all of our tests are, are fine. All below our standards. We're allowable for, standards for contaminant levels. So we don't have that concern.
Okay.
Couple of questions I couldn't, Madam Mayor. I just want to go just clarify a couple of things. So Seth, again, this is the first, staff has seen the report here this evening. Just want to again clarify that one of the things that the city asks you to take a look at is again, the central system versus decentralization and then gravity versus RO.
Correct.
And so on page, page five point four of the report you handed out earlier. The estimated cost for a central gravity filtration system is twenty-one point eight million. Is that correct?
Five point four?
I think it's page five point four.
Yep.
Page five point four. Page five point four, table five point six.
Sure. Yep.
So that's correct. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So twenty-one point eight million for that option and then to add.
That's the present worth analysis. Yep. So you have the capital cost and then the O and M cost combined.
So twenty-one point eight million.
Correct.
And the council then asked to, what would that cost be with, if you added RO and that's twenty-nine point six million?
Correct.
And I think that's significant and for the council, you know, staff would probably advise you at this point that as you look at this. You know, taking a step back where we were a year ago, we had WSB perform a study. And they showed us estimated cost of four and a half to eight, eight and a half million dollars. Now granted, that's a different number because that was more or less phasing in projects. So it wasn't a one, it wasn't a twenty thirty build out cost. Now you have a twenty thirty build out cost, correct?
Well, that four million didn't include water towers. It didn't include piping. It didn't, it, that, this is the entire cost.
Correct.
Their cost was about eighteen.
Understand that.
Okay.
Understand that.
I'm just being clear.
And so through that, some of that analysis that WSB had done, we had as staff presented that to you. We had set, you had then set rates based on, it was practically eight to eight and a half million.
For the water treatment and then as.
For the water treatment and wells and other.
Additional costs for those.
Another additional cost. And so water treatment was just a portion of that as well. So that's correct, Councilman Mayor Hunt. That the reverse, excuse me, the gravity filtration that WSB had was four and a half million. And there's some other wells and other cap improvements with that to get us to about eight, eight and a half million if I recall.
No, that was the higher, it was like twelve, thirteen million I think for the water towers.
I'm sorry, twelve, thirteen million. And we've set rates based on that. And so we've set, you as a council have set rates based on that. And so I think Seth, excuse me, Seth pointed out and I think the next step in this is we need as staff. Sorry. So one of the things that staff would recommend and others have been pointing out here this evening is we now need to take a look at twenty-one point eight million and twenty-nine point six million. Because again, we've set rates and residents that have water and they're in the room here this evening, got notices from the city based on our rate adjustments. And so I think doing, I mean, obviously rates would, you can see what they're going to do.
Well, we believe that's our next step. That's.
So, so I think that part of the conversation, in my opinion, that the council need to have is, you know, the cost of this. I think we all understand it's a significant impact and has a potential significant impact. And really for the policy question for the council is, you know, how much of that apple do you bite off? And so I think that is a significant policy decision, whether you spend twenty-one point eight million or twenty-nine million now. Or do you still phase it in? Because there's some economics in that. In that you, if you, if you do the full twenty-one point eight million or twenty-nine million now, you have eleven hundred and fifty households. Eventually more will come. And so there is some economics behind phasing it where you do a piece of that now. And who pays for that is the current eleven hundred and fifty. And as more homes are added and more monies are collected, and then you can add more components to it. So again, I think that's part of the fiscal analysis that we should take a look at is how do all these economics play out based on the number of households we have today versus those projections? And we've run some of those numbers. I know Ellis has been involved in that with the last projections and will certainly work more of that here in the coming weeks.
Well, I think that's the suggested next step is to look at the rates and see what the difference would be so people know. And Brian, would you be willing to work?
Oh, definitely. Yeah.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question or two that I would have for Seth? Because yeah, this is the first time I've seen the report too. As far as I know, in the funding sources, it talks about a potential one-time assessment. Is that very common or pretty uncommon for cities around the region, metro, state or?
Typically for water treatment, you don't see an assessment for water, like a water treatment facility or a well. Where you would potentially see an assessment would be water main, stuff like that. But when you're looking at for the entire system, it's an option you have. I don't see it used that much in big time projects like this. You're typically using, you're bonding for it, you're using your reserves, you're using the PFA financing. That's typically how most would approach that.
Okay. Yeah, because I was just wondering if that would be a case of potentially buying down some of the rate adjustments. I guess it's just either way you're collecting the money, I guess.
Absolutely.
And then probably one other question I would have, so I know the application that I signed off and sent off to the PFA for the project priority list had a little lower number than what's proposed here. Does that have anything to do with phasing or is that some other funding source?
Put a number in there at the point for now because we just had to get that in. It was due May second to get you on the list. And so we can update that number and we didn't know where the council was going to go this evening. So.
I wasn't sure if that was a maximum or if that was any type of, that can be still adjusted. So.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah, because I guess probably the last point would be, I guess, and you know, I've said before, I just got to figure a way to finance it. So whatever we end up doing, but I know just from a personal example, I live in the city and mayor down the road. And I would, phasing approach to me, just based on the experience that the city I live in ended up, you know, we have, you know, very high rates for water and sewer in, in our city. Based on maybe building a little too big capacity or a little too, too large, too fast. So, you know, just, just like as a comment from a personal situation. And obviously we'll be working together on rates and we'll get information out to the residents and we'll, we'll go from there.
Absolutely.
I have a question. Would you explore grants as a possibility for partially funding projects?
Well, I think if we're, I would assume the city would. If we were fortunate enough to work with the city, we'll look at that. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of grant opportunities out there right now. The, through the PFA, they used to have a program called Green Project Reserve is what it was called. And that was an option for anything that you put in that would qualify as a green reuse of water. Like the backwash reclaim tank, those types of things would be high efficiency motors. Any of those types of things you put in would be, would qualify for that grant. Unfortunately, I think last year, the year before, Department of Health did away with that program. They had no more funds from that program. But there are always programs out there that are, sometimes pop up. And the nice thing about being on this list, it doesn't commit you to doing anything. We talked about that project priority list and the intended use plan. And the benefit of being on that list, if you remember a few years ago with the ARRA stuff, the Recovery Act. If you weren't on that list, that's how they distributed the funds here in Minnesota. So if you weren't on that list, the project priority list or the intended use plan, you had no way to go get that money. So I think it's a great thing just to get on the list. Low interest loans are the number one benefit from there. And if there's a potential for grants or any other type of funding that may come down the line, at least you'd be in line for that. So we're always checking those programs. We work hand in hand with the Public Facilities Authority and Department of Health, always trying to work out funding scenarios and grant programs for the cities.
So I think the next, the next step is to do the water rate study with Brian. I like the idea of the informational meetings and maybe we can open that to any resident, not just the water users. And then the next step after that, let me know if you want to add her, is to poll our residents that are users. And give them different options based on using the rates. So.
Question I probably would have, Mayor Hunt and the council, how, how quickly would you like to see the information air as far as timeframe?
How long do you think it'll take you guys to get the rates together? Because you have some of the foundation information from Ellis.
Correct. Yeah. So yeah, the main thing would just be probably getting whatever the logistics are of getting myself and Seth and Liz Diaz from Ellis. All the players that need to be involved or to put those together.
I would think if once we sat down and pulled the information together and conferred on, you know, the big thing with that and looking at that. Because I think it's important to go out to twenty thirty and to look out that long term with a rate analysis like that. And it's a tool. So think of it as a tool to say, oh, let's project out here and let's see how all this is cash flowing. But it's, it's working together with city staff and saying, okay, here's all of the expenditures and here's what you have for your water fund. And I think we lump it all together and look at it as one full entity. And then the other piece is making sure on growth. What is the growth? Because that's what drives this. It's how many connections are coming in this year, next year, the year after? What's that rate? What does it look like? Do you have a big influx one year or is it ten years out before that influx? That makes a difference because that's when that cash comes in. It's at different times and that impacts everything. Also looks at, I would think, if you go through PFA financing, that's a much more attractive interest rate, whether you just went out on yourself. So you may run a scenario at, say, two percent interest with, assuming you get PFA funding. And then run another one at maybe three and a half or something and look at how those impact the rates too. And so once you set it up, it's pretty easy to set those little tweaks in there and say, here's what two percent money does. Here's what three and a half percent money does. Here's what this growth rate is. I mean, I think we have a pretty good feel for the numbers. I think staff with knowing what developments are coming, that's really the piece that drives it. If you know when you have that cash coming in from those connection fees and access charges, et cetera. When those are coming in, I mean, if you, if you project it out, there's millions of dollars in those coming in over the next fifteen, sixteen years. Big chunks of money, but exactly when it comes in is what you need to take a look at.
And so do you think you could have it done like in a week?
Or.
Staff will turn to the next council.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Okay, because we'd like to get this survey out by, which is the nineteenth. And we wanted to get the survey out at that meeting and then have the results back by the end of the month. So that would mean we need to schedule a session, an information session. But I'd rather have the rates there for the residents at the information session. Yeah, we can provide that too. That would be part of it. So.
Yeah, I guess, Madam Mayor, Councilor, so are you proposing, yeah, as far as our next, we could bring the information back to the next council meeting. But I assume we'd want to have a discussion at the council level before we'd start and then maybe targeting, getting.
I'd like to reconvene the meeting this evening. It is now nine twenty. And my understanding is that part of the tape ran out and Brian, his comments were not caught on tape. So Brian, do you want to restate what you said?
Sure. Yes, Madam, what, at what point did the tape run out? Do we know? Last twenty seconds. Okay. Okay. I mean, I think the main point we're just trying to get across is just the timeline as far as how quickly council wanted to see rates. And as far as logistics, as far as myself and Seth and whether Ellis, you know, would be able to bring those back. And I guess as far as, to me, I don't know if another two weeks, if we're able to get all on the same page, get the numbers together. And be sure about what we want to send out by the first part of June. I guess that's what I would feel more comfortable about. But I guess that's totally up to the mayor and council.
Well, we were really shooting to have the answers back by June first. So that would push back our timeline. Would that affect bidding? Seth?
What's that? I'm sorry.
If we waited till the first week in June, at our first meeting in June, would that push back the project or would we still be on?
It might push it back a little bit. I think you could, as long as you know you're moving forward, I don't think it's going to push you back that much. And I think it's, you know, probably makes sense to make sure you have all your numbers in order and everyone feels very comfortable with it. From a city staff standpoint, from your, your financial consultant looking at it, from us looking at it, making sure we're all on the same page. It probably makes sense. And if you want to get those informational meetings in there with the public, I think that all can be intertwined in there. I don't think it's going to push you back that much. You're looking at two weeks and in the whole scheme of a very big project. I think you want to make sure you step forward logically through this, get the numbers, make sure everyone's comfortable with it. And, and I think that's probably the number one thing right now.
So let's shoot for having the numbers at the May nineteenth meeting and then.
At the work session maybe or at the regular meeting?
At the work session and then we can put it on the agenda.
Okay.
And then we'll have the informational meetings between that May nineteenth meeting and the first week in June. And then we'll figure out how we're going to do the survey.
And Mayor and Council, if I might interject here for a second. I've heard, I've heard the word survey come up. My ears go up when I hear that because I was involved with the twenty eleven survey that we did here, community survey. And the only reason I'm asking is because I don't know what your intentions are as far as how you want to survey the public. I have heard tonight that you're interested in not just polling or surveying those that are users, but all the community. And so the one thing I might propose to you is the, used to be called Decision Resources. Everybody knows them by that name. But they've recently changed their name to Morris Leatherman. Same firm, same group. They already have our data and I don't think we've grown enough in the last few years where the household data that they have for their four hundred statistically valid random sample of our community. It could be a way to actually do a pretty legit margin of error of five percent survey. Few questions, whatever you come up with to ask them. I can't imagine it being more by ten questions. Correct? Maybe?
Well, I think we had talked about in earlier meeting, having like four options with the costs associated with each option. And then information that they could go to if they wanted to know, okay, what does this do? What does that do?
But I'm just saying, we could possibly be able to take advantage of the work that was done already by Morris Leatherman or before that Decision Resources. Where they already have a, a collection of four hundred randomly selected numbers here. I'm sure there'll be some changes. People move in, people move out. We have added some housing here, so we have added some. But I think that might be a.
I think we're still only interested for the voting purposes on the users because they are the ones going to pay for it.
We may have had to ask that question, so they may have that as a subgroup. I'm not sure, but I could.
Well, we can look into that.
I could look into it if you'd like.
Yeah, we can talk about that at the May nineteenth meeting then.
Okay. I just, what I, the only reason I brought it up was, if you would like, I could at least make a telephone call to them and kind of ask them about. Because I know a lot of the things we do, at least we did in the survey, we, you know, asked a lot of demographic related. But I believe we asked a question if you're on city water or not. I can't recall correctly exactly, but I thought we did. So they may have that. So.
Yeah, I think that's.
So I could at least pursue and give you some idea of what it would cost.
And see which way we want to go.
At least give you an idea of the cost.
So the system you're talking about here, Mike, the most important thing is, for me anyway, is to make sure that every person that's, would be connected up to that water has a right and a vote. Okay?
Yep.
Eleven hundred, that we get to each one of those so they have a say so. We want them to have a say so and as Ann said, the options. This is this, this is what this is going to cost. Now, the other firm that you're using would partly be a great backup source.
Well, I'm not sure that you need to absolutely find out from each and every person because what you're, if you did that, you would be, it would be like the census. I mean, the census doesn't even, they use one but every ten. But I guess my point is, is that you get a, you get a, the phrase that's used by them is that it's a statistically valid random sample. No, it's not asking each and every person, each eleven hundred and fifty households, what their thoughts are. That's quite a bit of cost to do that. If you would, it's been proven that you can randomly select four hundred people if you do it correctly. And that's a statistically valid random sample of your community within a margin of error of five percent. You can go up to, I believe, six hundred and the margin.
But you can focus on the, on the users. I mean, can you use?
I believe we can. I believe that they have the names and addresses and contact information for the four hundred people that were selected to participate in that survey. And they have all their answers still. And one of the things that I believe we asked, as I was just mentioning a second ago, I believe we did ask a question, are you connected to city water or are you not? And so they could select that subgroup of the ones that are, maybe it's enough people, maybe it's not. I don't know. I guess I'll have to find out. So, but I would hate to see you try to poll eleven hundred people.
Well, I think when we originally discussed it, we were going to give them the option of logging onto the website with their account number.
Okay.
And putting in what they prefer. So they could do that.
That's one way of doing it, but I don't know if we have that capacity.
Or they could send back a card that would be in their water bill.
Okay. It would probably have to, I think the only reason I'm saying is that you want to be able to not have people. want to be able to not have people kind of self-select, you know. If there are, everybody that gets is in favor of RO or the opposite, then that's what you're going to get. Whereas the survey where you randomly selected people based on a number of criteria, you're getting a cross-section. You don't have to ask everyone.
The things you're talking about, you're talking about something totally different. You're talking about letting those of us who are going to be paying the bill vote as to whether you want gravity filtration or reverse osmosis, not whether, you know, what do you, are you on City Water. So, what Ann is saying is we should have the right to vote if it's going to increase our bill by 300%. I don't want, you know, a person down the street from me that isn't, has, doesn't have the information or hasn't paid any attention taking my vote. I think all of us that are going to be paying the price should have the right to vote.
I understand that, but I'm saying that there may be a way to sub-select a group of people that are just participants in paying for the water system out of the random sample.
Well, okay. We're just, it's the, it is the people, but it's 1,100 households that are connected to City Water that are paying, that are going to be paying the bill. So, you're just, so you're suggesting just to take a subset of those 1,100 households?
I'm just saying, we had 400 people that participated in our community survey in 2011. Each one of those people that were polled were asked a number of questions, 100-something questions. One of the questions that were asked is, are you connected to City Water or not? So, right there, let's say it's half. Right there, they've got 200 people that they know that were participants in the survey that also are, that are also on City Water. All they'd have to do is find another 400, 200 people to comprise their 400 to make their random sample be statistically valid.
Does the city have, the city has a list of everybody that's on City Water?
But I think the cost of doing this survey may be less than trying to get all, your spots is 1,100 people. That's all I'm saying.
You're comparing the cost of a one-time serve and exercise to the implications of, you know, millions of dollars and you're, I think a statistical survey really doesn't fit.
Well, I'm not sure if I agree with that, sir, but like I said, there's a number of decisions. This council's made millions and millions of dollars worth of decisions since that survey and that's, that's valid data. It's, it's not like that's not valid data. They've made many decisions based on the survey data.
Well, Mike, why don't you just check it out?
I will check it out.
And bring it back to the next meeting. That way, that way we know.
At least I could find out if, what, what subgroups are there, if it's possible, what the cost would be. And if you want to do a card send-in, you know, that's fine. I think that's legit.
Right, because I think we want to look at all our options.
Right. Yeah, I can at least give you the option on it.
Okay.
If I may, Council, we've done some surveys in the past with some of our clients and gone out surveys to hundreds and thousands of people. And so, I can do a little research on that, what we've done in the past. And we've done it pretty economically. I think we use, is it Survey Monkey? Is that what it's called, I think? So, I think we've used that in the past. Sounds funny. But anyway, I can look into that too and forward information on, onto the city.
Well, let's talk about this at the May 19th meeting.
Yep, definitely.
Do you have a referendum or we can, I mean, this is a single-issue thing, so a referendum might be a better way to go or everybody, you know, that's all we're voting on. Do you want to do on our City Water or why?
Well, if you did, I'll answer that one. If you did a referendum, then everybody in the city would be allowed to vote whether they're on City Water or not.
Well, because a lot of people that aren't on City Water are also concerned about, you know, as a future project.
I agree.
Okay. Okay, Council, any further questions or, okay, great. Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving on to the consent agenda and we have the special meeting minutes, but we don't have B or C has been moved to the business items. So, any questions on the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. There's no public hearings. So, now we're moving into the business section and our first item is Woodland Cove Lake Edition Phase 2.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of Council. This is the Phase 2 final plat application from Woodland Cove Group LLC. As the Council may recall, the preliminary plat was approved back in 2011 for the entire 500-acre development site. The city then worked on a master development agreement with the city and the developer that acted as a guide for us as we go through the final plat phases of the development. And this would be, again, the Phase 2, which is 25 single-family lots associated with it. This is the first of the lake lots. And when we look at final plat approval, we look for consistency with the preliminary plat. And this, this proposal is indeed consistent with their preliminary plat proposal and acts as, again, the Phase 2 of the Woodland Cove development. So, looking for Council's discussion on that. The applicant is in the audience this evening. There are two parts to this agenda item, one being the final plat itself. There'd be a resolution in your staff report or your packet regarding that. And then the second item would be a, as we do with any final plat, we enter into a subdivision agreement specific to that plat, which lists out the requirements that the developer and the city work on as part of that final plat application.
Does the developer want to say anything?
Madam Chair, members of the Council, my name's David Newman. I'm part of the team with Woodland Cove. As David said, the 25-lot application is totally consistent with the preliminary plat. Nothing's really changed other than we've added some entrance monuments in the street. It's just a minor change consistent with the master developer's agreement. So, we ask for your approval.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the final plat, Woodland Cove Lake Edition.
Just a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, subdivision agreement?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the Council. As previously mentioned, now that you've approved the final plat application, there's a subdivision agreement looking for authorization from the city council to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign that subdivision agreement, which again, lays out the terms and conditions, a part of this final plat application.
So, moved.
A second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Our next item is item B, which is the annual dock license. And this is for DR Horton for 10 dock slips on the properties located at 950 County Road 110 North, PUD zoning.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and members of Council. Council may recall, back on April 7th, you reviewed the preliminary plat for the, what is called the Orchard Cove Development, which is located on two pieces of property referred to as the Wallace Properties off County Road 110. This, this part of the application was tabled to allow for the Lake Minnetoka Conservation District an opportunity to review that application. So, the proposal is 10 boat slips on 679 feet of non-continuous shoreline. As I mentioned, the LMCD did spend about a total of three meetings reviewing this application. There was some minor tweaks made to the submittal, but what you see in your packet this evening was ultimately approved on April 9th of 2014. The findings and conditions from the LMCD are included as part of your packet. If Council approves the permit this evening, not only would those conditions apply to the situation, but the additional conditions outlined in your staff report would also be as part of the approval, if that's the desire of the Council. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing at their April 28th meeting. Their, their motion was a 4-0 vote to recommend approval with the plan that's submitted in your packet. Here is the, the plan as submitted and approved by the LMCD. You can see it is directly adjacent to an existing multiple dock that we have, the Ridgewood Cove Homeowners Association. That, that would not change or be affected as a result of this application and it would be directly adjacent to that. So, with that, we do have DR Horton in the audience this evening if there's any questions for them. Staff would also be available and as mentioned, there are conditions as outlined in the staff report if it's the desire of the Council to, to move the application forward.
I'll make a motion to accept the annual dock license application for DR Horton for 10 dock slips on the properties located at 950 County Road 110.
Can we make comments?
No, this isn't a public hearing. A second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number C is accepting bids and award contract for the ceiling of Testwell located in the Woodland Cove property.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the Council, members of the audience. We did take bids for the ceiling of the South Testwell. That's a unique well number. We received four bids. The lowest bid was from Don Stidolo Well Drilling and the low bid amount was $1,490, no cents. And staff recommends awarding the contract to Don Stidolo Well Drilling in the amount of $1,490.
And I'll make a motion also to accept the bid for Don Stidolo awarding the contract to City in the Testwell located on Woodland Cove property.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4-0. Number D, or letter D is Red Oak Development, accepting feasibility study for the County Road 151 and County Road 19 water main improvements.
Madam Mayor and members of the Council, there is a stapled, hard copy feasibility report in front of you. This is revised from the reports you have in your council packet. The items that we revised is for the oversizing cost. It's more detailed and it actually adds about $25,000 to the city's portion of the oversizing and reduces the development cost. What we did is just a more detailed breakdown of those costs after coordinating some of the feasibility report and its cost estimate with the developer. And so, with that, I just want to mention that is in front of, that's the only thing that changed was the oversizing cost and the total amount, the cost of that breakdown. So, the location of the project is in northeast quarter of the project as shown on the map on the screen. The water main would be extended to serve the, serve the development on County Road 19. A little closer to the location. The right-of-way is, it's all county road. We have a connection point that's actually in one of the lanes of the County Road 151 and 66 feet of right-of-way and we have several utilities that are in the, on either side of the roadway. There are steep ditches, there's rolling terrain, there's wetlands. So, it's not a complicat, it's a complicated corridor. We have met with Hennepin County and they've requested that we approach this project as a directional drilling process, project. And I believe they wanted us to do that because they recently resurfaced the roadway. There is a high-pressure gas line on the, in the corridor in which we wanted to drill, directionally drill this water main. And so, we do have to keep some distance away from that to make sure that we don't disturb that. We also have the other utilities, fiber optic, I believe is on the opposite side of the road. We have cable TV and other communications. The water main extension is development-driven. The water system modeling has identified the water main size for the area and the city of Minnetrista is responsible for the oversizing of the water main and the developer is identified for the equivalent lateral cost. The water main service area is identified by the comprehensive plan. Here's the location of the project in relation to the planning and zoning and staging plan. We do have a 16-inch water main that would be extended on County Road 151 from Maplecrest Drive to Apple Garden Road. And then we would reduce that size to 12-inch to the project. The total length of water main is just under 4,800 feet. As at the start of the corridor, you can see we do have some wetlands along the corridor to deal with. And then we also may have some right-of-way issues that we'll have to deal with right at this intersection. So, we may have to push the water main out more in this turn lane to get around that corner. But we are working with Hennepin County to determine if there's an extra utility easement in that area. And the idea behind this directional drilling method is to reduce, number one, restoration costs and also disturbance, not only to the pavement, but also to residents that live along the corridor. The special assessment considerations, it is a general 429 process and we can't assess more than the benefit received to the developer or to the future homeowners. The applicant will be submitting a petition and waiver of the 429 statute. And the finance directors indicated the city has the bonding capacity to accommodate a project like this. And this is just, on the screen is just your normal process for special assessment process. If we have that waiver of the 429 process, we can speed up the schedule slightly. The water main improvements in the feasibility report, the total amount is $658,500. The water main oversizing cost is $137,500 and the total amount to the developer for the extension would be $521,000. And we provided a summary of the Red Oak Sewer and Water fees with the trunk area charges and connection charges, both for the water and for the sewer. And the Red Oak Development is responsible for the water main cost, less the water main oversizing cost, I stated The parcels to be assessed is the Red Oak Development and the legal description, property identification numbers is also provided. The project schedule in the feasibility report would have Council authorizing or accepting the feasibility report and authorizing plans and specifications at tonight's meeting. And the Council would receive the petition and waiver form from the 429 process at the, at the May 19th meeting. And we look at advertising for bids, asking Council for authorization to advertise for bids by June 16th. And we'd look at a construction starting in August and with a substantial completion in October. With that, I entertain any questions you may have. I should add to the comments that the developer has seen the feasibility report. We've had some conversation with him about the oversizing cost and the estimated cost for the project as well. And I'm not sure if they're in the audience. I suspect they are.
And I take the 12-inch is going to be sufficient for, for future in that?
Correct. We did size the, the water mains are sized according to the comprehensive plan, but we did take a look at the segment that is between Maplecrest and Apple, Applewood?
Apple Garden.
Apple Garden, excuse me. And that portion, we were able to size at 16-inch. The rest of it was 12-inch. And that also would be available to serve a future development on, in another community if you so chose to do that. That's not in the reports or the costs aren't in the report, but that's something that could be added quite easily.
Council, any other questions?
On the $137,500 that the city would be responsible for, what's the payback on that? How do we get our payback on that?
Well, you do, you do collect your trunk area charges and your connection charges for that and that's where your payback comes in.
So, in order to get the payback on that, would the payback come from, once it's fully developed or is there a?
Essentially, essentially, yes, it would.
Would it have to be fully developed to get the payback?
Essentially, yes. But they're also paying for other water supply and storage along with their trunk area charges. So, they are paying for more than just the trunk water main.
I was just looking at what the, what the payback would be for the city.
If we go back, like go back on...
The $137,500.
Correct. And the, with the connection charges and trunk area charges, let's just look at your trunk area charges with the final plat. You're going to get 100 and Correct, and with the connection charges and trunk area charges, let's just look at your trunk area charges with the final plat, you're going to get a hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred dollars. That basically covers your payback right there at the time of the final plat, is I believe when you collect that.
That is correct, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Christians. What Paul is saying is correct, the trunk area charge now would be paid at the time of final plat. The city would collect a hundred and seventy-three thousand upfront and that in essence would pay for the cost of our upsizing.
Okay.
Thank you, Paul.
Paul Consul, it's your pleasure.
First, we got to accept the feasibility study, right? And authorize, okay, it's both, okay. Make a motion to accept the feasibility study, it authorized preparation of plans and specs for the County Road one fifty-one. County Road nineteen water main improvement project, project number zero, two zero, zero two dash one four.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
It's four oh. Okay, and that would be number two is to approve the final design services for County Road one fifty-one and County Road nineteen water main improvements.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're on to architectural guidelines for Ryland Homes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. Ryland Homes might be a new name to you in regards to this specific development. As you may recall, Source Land Company was the group that was in for preliminary plat approval of that subdivision. Since that time, Ryland Homes has entered into a purchase agreement to finish out that development, if you will, with the final plat and then building of their houses within the development. As part of that, in them doing their due diligence, we've been reviewing our ordinances and the approvals and what product they'd be putting in that development. And Ryland Homes has come to the consideration of asking for a waiver from our architectural guidelines that we have listed out in chapter five of our zoning ordinance. Specifically, what they're, what they're looking to do is offer six different floor plans as part of the development. Each elevation, the houses themselves would range in size from twenty-one hundred square feet to thirty-two hundred square feet. I do have some product samples that they provided as part of your packet on the, on the big screen. The specific requirements that they're looking to have waived is to allow that garages protrude in front of the living area or a covered porch to a maximum of sixteen feet. And allow garages to compromise up to sixty-eight percent of the ground floor, street facing building frontage. City code does allow for the council to issue waivers from these requirements. If the lot or the physical conditions of the lot makes the application, or the application of these standards impractical. And that's one of the reasons that Ryland has cited that they are asking for this waiver to get their product on that site. Is given the lot widths of the lots within that development and to get the size homes that they're looking to get on there. That's why they're asking for the waiver to the architectural guidelines. So again, as part of their due diligence, they're, they're looking for this being a first step. Certainly the items you did earlier this evening with the water main extension is another part of the due diligence. And then what would ultimately be coming to you would be a final plat application. We'd review that consistent with the preliminary plat. Ryland Homes is in the audience this evening if you have any questions for them and staff is also available for questions.
Well. This is kind of ironic because that's why I voted against this thing is because of the lawlessness. Now we're standing here and they want a variance to put these houses on there. So like I say, I, I didn't, I wasn't positive this was going to happen, but when you get little, itty bitty narrow lots, this is what you end up with. So like I say, that's why I voted against this thing originally. So I'm, I'm not in favor of this, you know? We talked about it, they knew how narrow these lots were, they didn't want to make them any bigger, you know? They were within the density, yes. Like I say, I don't have a problem with the density, but I had a problem with the lot. They could have changed that and they chose not to. So as far as I'm concerned, this is what you get. This is what you asked for, this is what you get. So.
Could we ask them to come up with different types of homes for this development? Rather than the ones that they submitted? Where the garages would not be going out into the road?
Well, that's the request before you, Madam Mayor and members of council. As we, we do allow, this technically is not a variance, it is, it would be a waiver. We do allow for that waiver and flexibility to, to the design standards. So that's the request that's before you for your decision this evening.
Somebody from Ryland wanting to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name's Mark Sossier, I'm the land development manager for Ryland Homes. Yeah, one of the reasons for the request for the waiver is, again, as you've mentioned, it is the lot width. And in order to get a certain square footage home on these lots, which this market is looking for. You need, the garage needs to be up forward to get enough first floor. Because there's not enough room to build the homes wider because of the lot width. And so that's where the garage forward comes into play. As far as the percentage of garage going across the front. With, you know, you're basically sacrificing that third stall garage. If we were to follow the, the current ordinance, you wouldn't be able to do a third stall garage. And third stall garage is, is an item that most buyers want, so that's why we have that in the request today. We do have, right now, that's, Springfield's probably the worst case scenario. Can you get to one of the other ones? There, like the Huntington, that's another home that, there we don't, again, we don't meet thirty percent of the garage. But here we do have the porches forward and the garages forward. So we're, we're developing two more plans, we sized these. But to have a full gamut, we're trying, we're working with plans that we currently build in other neighborhoods. So I guess we appreciate if we reconsider, but this is currently what we have planned for this community. And if we were not to receive this waiver, we'd have to go back and relook at the whole site.
See David, can, do they have, excuse me, do they have the option to go back and adjust the final plat if they want to?
Well, the preliminary plat's been approved. Minor, it would depend upon what kind of adjustments you're talking about. Likely though, any change would require basically a start over of the preliminary plat review. We'd have to start the process over again.
Thank you.
So this is the only model that you have that doesn't have the garage, you know?
We have a lineup of homes that fit on a fifty foot wide building path. That's what this neighborhood is designed for. And these are the homes that Ryland builds for that fifty foot pad. So there's a variety, like there's this, the Huntington. Basically, the garage is flush with the, the living space. And then the other two that we're showing, the Springfield and the Bristol, those are the more entry level or the, you know, the entry home or the lower market homes that, there you see the garage forward. So I, you know, one of the other things to consider in a neighborhood is variety. You know, we've, we've worked with other cities on ordinances where you needed the garages to be flush or you all need a Wayne's Coat. Just what that ends up doing is making the whole neighborhood look the same. So we found as we design our communities, and it also works with the buyers too, you know, for the entry level or the, the lower homes versus the higher homes. It's nice to have that variety too as you're going down the street. If they're all flush, then they all look the same and it's not as interesting of a neighborhood. But if you have some homes where you have this flush and the porch is forward or other homes where you have the garage forward and the porch is back, makes for a little bit more interesting neighborhood. So that's one of the arguments for having a variety. And one of the things we could consider for the neighborhood, and we could work on this with staff, would be to put some percentages. You know, garages that are forward are limited to maybe fifty percent of the homes and the garages that are flush with the, front of the homes could be, you know, the other fifty percent. Therefore, you're kind of managing it a little bit more. But again, the third stall, it's correct or wrong, it's thirty percent is what the original?
About fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Correct.
For, across the main floor, yeah, that one's a tough one to pass on. So as an alternate, alternate, we could, you know, the garage forward part, we could kind of work with staff on setting up some percentages. If that's something you could consider.
David, do we have a precedent for doing these kind of waivers?
We did do this for the Hermitage Shores development when Lennar purchased that development. It was a little bit further along, the final plat and infrastructure was already in. But the last one we did, these, these were the two similar waiver requests that were asked for by Ryland, or I'm sorry, Lennar at the time.
More discussion?
I mean, I don't, honestly, I don't think aesthetically it's very attractive, but I don't know how else he's going to get it on the lot and have some variety in the neighborhood.
I know, but my point is, if they had the option to do it, if they didn't do it, we pointed it out to them and now we're sitting here. You know, if the developer would have listened when we talked to them, we wouldn't be here today. So for that, I'm going to make a motion that we deny the waiver for Ryland Homes.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm a nay.
Denied, aye.
That's three one. The motion is, the waiver is denied. Okay, I have on here E, amending two thousand fourteen appointments and designations, but I don't have anything in the packet. Okay.
Oh.
Changes in committee assignments. Okay. So I don't have those in front of me.
Yeah, I just pulled it up, Madam Mayor and council. You know, with the recent appointment of, at that time, councilmember Hunt to mayor, you'll need to discuss that who would be the acting mayor? So you would need to appoint someone acting mayor to replace, again, at that time, councilmember Hunt, who served in that role. With the Mayor Fisher resigning, we have an appointment to the Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities that would need to be filled. And then, and Mayor Hunt, you'll need to, I suppose, comment on your continued involvement in LMCD or MCWD, those have been your appointments. If you're looking to change those. The planning commission representative was Mayor Fisher at that time.
Yeah, and I attended the last one.
And I believe that's, it's all they show on our appointments, so it probably need to be decided.
Okay, well, LMCD is, you're accepting applications, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so that'll be filled. Who would like to be acting mayor?
I suggest Mark.
Okay.
Mark.
Geez, thanks.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so it's.
I abstain.
Three, three oh. Okay, and then Northwest League, is that usually the mayor or is that?
It has been the mayor in the past, yes.
Okay, then I'll take the, and when do they meet?
I will need to get that information to you and we'll come ahead.
LMCD, we talked about planning, does somebody want to be the liaison with planning?
I'm on the park commission liaison, so.
That would fit right in, right?
Things fine.
Won't that fit right in?
I don't mind doing it. Okay, so I'll do planning. And then what about police? Who was on police?
That is a appointment per the agreement that we have with the city of Santa Bonita, it is the mayor, so.
Oh, it is the mayor.
Mayor Hunt.
How about if you do that and I'll take planning?
Okay, so Mark's going to take planning and I'll take police. Okay, is that everything? That's everything. And then I did notice in our packet that we had the ceiling of the well, but it's not on the agenda. And we already approved the agenda.
Can Dr. Drew do that, please?
In our packet, there was the ceiling of the well on King's Point, I don't think we did that.
Yeah.
We did that earlier.
Yeah.
Oh, we did, okay, I missed it.
Don Stidolo.
Oh, that's right, okay. Wasn't on, wasn't on my agenda, okay.
Mayor Hunt, you should, based on these appointments, it is done by resolution, so I'll motion to amend the resolution for the appointments as you just discussed.
All right, I'll make a motion to amend the resolution. Acting mayor will be Mark Vanderlinde, Northwest Hennepin League will be Ann Hunt. LMCD is yet to be determined through the application process, if we will review on May nineteenth. Mark Vanderlinde will take on planning and Ann Hunt will take on police.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's four oh. Okay, our next discussion was the Thrive MSP response discussion. And I put together a draft letter for your review. I wanted to know if anybody had any additions or, we can also move this to the next meeting since time is getting late.
Why don't we?
Okay, I'll make a motion to move this to the next meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the transparency discussion, there's a program for financial reporting that I can also move to the next meeting because of time. So I'll make a motion to move that to the next, to May nineteenth.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number H is to adopt the summary and title for publication for Orchard Cove Ordinance four eighteen. This was from the meeting where there were only three of you and you need a super majority to approve it. So I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's four oh. Number I, or letter I, is the discussion about the Hoffman property and directing staff to, to work with WSB to come up with a plan for how to address their stormwater issue.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four oh. And then number J is the Public Works contract, which we received a summary this evening when we sat down. I haven't had a chance to read it. Do you want to go over that, Mike?
I'll go through it here, Mayor and council, handed in front of you is a letter that was sent to the Public Works Union, which is the IUO, IUO Local Forty-nine. Now we've, we, being the personnel committee, councilmembers Vanderlinde and Donnie, who have been working and, see, I should point out also assistant administrator, assistant administrator Broney. Do you need to start over? Okay, sorry. So we've been working, the personnel committee and myself and Mr. Broney have been working with the Public Works Union, starting back in late two thousand thirteen for a new contract. Their current contract ended December thirty-first of two thousand thirteen. And as I've mentioned, the, been a number of meetings throughout the last three, over three months in these negotiations. They tend to always come down to salaries and benefits. The memo that's been handed out to you is what has been discussed with the personnel committee. That offer has been made to the bargaining unit and they have voted on it and have accepted it. So I'd just like to cover the six points that are in the contract for amendment. You don't have a copy of the full contract this evening. You don't have a copy of the full contract this evening, but the motion or the action that staff would be seeking is to accept this proposal and then authorize staff to put this in a final version of the contract, and then you would approve that at your next meeting. Just again, to go through the six points, insurance. This has been, again, discussed not only with this union, but our other unions and non-union employees, that the monthly contribution would increase from eight sixty-seven to nine hundred and seventeen dollars per month. This is a two-year contract, and so that would be the amount for two thousand fourteen, and there would be insurance reopeners for two thousand fifteen. Just not knowing what the insurance premiums are going to be doing for two thousand fifteen. And so neither side, or I should say both sides really agree that this would be something to be discussed later this year as we know more about insurance premiums for next year. The second item is changing our comp time language. This would be, this change in provision would allow for twenty hours of comp time carryover from one fiscal year to the next. This would be consistent with other union contracts that we have with our police department unions. And so this became a compromise. The union was certainly seeking a lot more than that, and it was, for us, something that we could agree to, given, again, being it's consistent with our other unions. In terms of wages, an item that we spent a great deal of time on in our negotiations would be increased two percent for two thousand fourteen and two percent for two thousand fifteen. So it's two percent and two percent for those two years. We did get some things in return for this contract, and these are kind of the next two items. One is for probation. Probation for new employees will increase from six months to twelve months. That, again, is very consistent with our police union contracts and our non-union employees. The Public Works Union was the only union or set of employees that had something less than the twelve months required for everyone else. And then the other language that we got, and it was important to us, is having the second-person call-to-duty language. This happens occasionally when, on nights and weekends, we do have someone on call, and if the situation is such where the person on call is responding, this language then identifies who that second or third person may be coming in to assist. That language states that if the on-call duty employee needs additional assistance, seniority would be the basis for determining which employee would be asked to respond. However, if a situation is one of emergency and/or a public safety matter that requires technical expertise, the city may call an employee to respond that is most qualified. And really, the premise behind that is, a lot of it is senior-based, seniority-based, but in a situation where if we have a water main leak, potential sewer problems, we're going to be able to call in an employee that that's senior-based, but rather that's expertise-based. So we're responding with people that can, that can remedy the situation quickly and not causing liability or damage to any of our residents. And then the last thing I would mention is our post-employee health savings account. This is a provision we've had in our contract in previous years. We've noted that we've looked, that we would look into creating a health, sick care savings account plan. And in this contract, we, we note that we will implement one in two thousand fifteen. And I should specify that this is not an additional benefit. This type of provision would allow for employees that have accrued sick time or vacation time per our contract language, allowing them to roll that over into a healthcare savings account. So it's not any new money for the employee, it's just allowing them to invest it, rather than taking lump-sum payments. And this is certainly a tax advantage for the employees if they, when they retire. So with that, again, went through those rather quickly. Personnel Committee, Mr. Vanderlinde or Ms. Donahue certainly can comment on it as well, but this is a direction that we've been negotiating for a couple of months. And with your approval, again, Madam Mayor and Council, it's authorized staff to proceed with outlining this in the full agreement for your consideration.
I have two questions, Mike. One, first of all, on the five-and-a-half percent increase, roughly five-and-a-half percent increase that the city's contributing under the article AA or double X insurance, what is the insurance increase overall? In other words, if we're picking up an additional five-and-a-half percent, what's the total increase to the city? Are we picking up all of it, or a portion of it, or...
Madam Mayor and Mr. Christians, the, our insurance premiums went up roughly, I think, thirteen-and-a-half percent?
That's very close.
So we're picking up about five-and-a-half percent of the thirteen?
Correct.
That was, that was my first question. My second question is, second-person call-to-duty. How are they paid?
There's, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Christians, they are, there's contract language for callback, and if that employee is called back, it is that time and a half.
For a minimum?
For a minimum of two hours.
Minimum of two.
Correct. So if it's anything under two hours, they would receive a two-hour minimum, and then anything over two hours is the exact time.
That's good.
It's pretty much what we talked about in the Personnel Committee.
Correct.
That's good.
Okay.
So we need a motion to accept this and direct staff to put together a contract?
That is correct.
Bring it back to the next meeting?
Correct.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four-oh. Okay, next is approving claims. Questions on the claims?
I'll make a motion to approve the claims, it's written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's four-oh. Okay, now it's time for council reports. I attended a mayor's meeting last Friday, and it was sort of a roundtable. We got to talk about what's happening in our cities, and it was, it was very interesting. And they, Isata hosted it, and they're interested in talking more about the scenic byway, and see if the surrounding like communities are interested. LMCD is in your packet, so I won't go over that. And how about you, Mark?
I have none.
I have nothing, I do have a meeting for the Gillespie Center, I may have something to report at the next...
Mike?
I have nothing to report, other than the fact that I do have a meeting tomorrow at the Gillespie Center, and I may have something to report after that, at the next meeting.
Bob?
Two things, one, Spirit of the Lakes, Spirit of the Lakes is in full swing here. Certainly looking for additional sponsors and volunteers. And two, Wednesday, last Wednesday, as I went over to the Mound Fire Department for our advisory meeting, as we are all ready to sit down, there was a fire call, so it's been rescheduled. So we didn't have it, it's been rescheduled.
Bob, and I should remind you that we have Trista Days coming up on the seventeenth from eleven to two. Steph?
Madam Mayor and Council, the item listed in your staff reports is, I really wanted Mr. Beatty to give you a quick update on the request that was provided to you at the last meeting from a resident regarding the investigation, and so I'd like Mr. Beatty to discuss that with you.
Madam Mayor and Council, I wasn't sure exactly what this item was about, but I suspected it was what the city administrator just mentioned. As you probably know, I've been out of the country for the last three weeks. Back late Saturday night, back in the office today for the first time, digging through everything that happened in the last couple of weeks. I am aware of the request, but obviously haven't had a chance to give it the attention that I think it deserves. So I don't have a report tonight, but I will be bringing a response back at a future meeting.
Okay. Upcoming meeting topics?
I think May nineteenth is, well, May nineteenth is our next meeting, work session at five-thirty, regular meeting at seven. The five-thirty work session is, is going to be dedicated to interviewing potential council candidates, and also for the committee opening that we've advertised. And then we will have that being carried over to the regular meeting for council discussion.
And we're going to have water treatment on that too?
And water treatment, that's correct. And then, I believe that's, and staff reports.
That was it for staff reports, okay. So at this time, I move to go into closed session for two purposes, to continue evaluating the performance of Mike Funk, city administrator, pursuant to Minnesota State Section thirteen D, point oh-five subdivision three A, and for preliminary consideration of allegations against Mr. Funk pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section thirteen D dash oh-five subdivision three B. Meeting is closed at ten nineteen. We are now back in open meeting, and I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to take action regarding the city administrator's employment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will summarize the results of the performance review. Under organizational management, we found the city administrator's performance below expectations. Under fiscal business, we found the city administrator's performance below expectations. Under the relationship with mayor and council, we found the city administrator's performance below expectations. Under long-range planning, we found the city administrator's performance fair. Under public and inter-agency relations, we found his performance fair. Under leading, we found his performance fair. And under professional development, we found his performance below expectations. And that is the summary of our closed session.
Not something that's, this is not easy to do. But I feel I have to. I make a motion to terminate Mike Funk's contract with the city of Minutris.
You'll need an effective date on that as well.
The effective date would be May fifth, two thousand fourteen. Do I have a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, well, have Mr. Broney collect his keys, phone, key cards, and other city-provided items. And Mr. Broney can arrange a time after business hours for Mr. Funk to collect his personal effects, and... And that's, and Mike would like to make a statement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, I'd just like to say, the city council, as you heard, has decided it is time for a change in leadership. I do respect that decision. In my almost seven-years tenure, I am very proud of the many accomplishments and the results made on behalf of the staff and our council. Minutris is considered among the top ten percent of rated metro communities, and the staff are rated among the highest. I feel like I've played a major role in that accomplishment. I wish to thank Mayor Fisher and the previous council for giving me, giving me this fantastic opportunity to work in this city. Last, I wish to thank the wonderful staff I have worked with. All of you are nothing short of fantastic. And with that, I give my best to all of you in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at this time? Oh.
Do we want to set up a meeting with staff tomorrow?
Um... We could.
I think we...
Like a Q and A?
I think we owe it to our staff to set up a meeting tomorrow to get their questions, what kind of questions they have. I think we owe it to them, we've got a great staff here. We're not... Dave? Dave? Well, somebody should be here.
Okay, so at this point, I will, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favors? Saying aye.
Aye.